Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. My name is Mark Conway. I'm Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 4th District. Today, the Committee will have hearings for Bill 24-0584, Baltimore City Government Entities' Language Access, 24-0507, Studying Report, Infrastructure in Urban Meadows, 24-0233R, An Informational Hearing on the Department of Transportation and Street Paving Timelines, and LO24-0070, Legislative Oversight on Underground Infrastructure Safety. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, representing the 4th District, Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District, and Councilwoman Ramos, representing the 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Representing the Office of the President, I've got Preston Lewis here, and representing the Mayor's Office, I've got Tyler Shanella. We will jump right into it. We have quite a busy agenda for the day, and I understand we have some public safety agencies that are slated to go a little bit later, and there is an emergency right now. So we want to make sure we are expeditious with our time. So we'll start with Bill 24-0584, Baltimore City Government Entities' Language Access, for the purpose of requiring that certain Baltimore government entity... For the purpose of requiring a certain Baltimore government entity to appoint a language access liaison and adopt a language access plan, requiring a Baltimore government entity to provide language access services to specified individuals, establishing certain reporting requirements, defining certain terms, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the provision of language access services by Baltimore government entities. This bill was introduced on September 16th, 2024, and it was sponsored by Councilwoman Ramos and the Administration. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if the Administration wanted to make some remarks. I know Mima will make some remarks during their time, but I just want to thank everybody for being here and also thank Mima for all their work. What this bill does is it codifies what agencies have been asked to do by the city administrator already, and that is to make sure that residents who do not speak English still have the opportunity to access city services, and that Mima will provide the resources through translation services, through interpretation, and that each agency just needs to provide a liaison to Mima so that all of that is integrated into the work of the agency. And that is really critical because people who are speaking other languages are... Those communities are growing in our city, and they should be accessing city services just like everybody else does. So that's the crux of the bill, and I look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything further from the Administration? Tyler's not here. I want to acknowledge Councilman Stokes, who's joined us. Thank you, Councilman Stokes. We'll jump right into agency reports, and we have a lot of them. We're going to start with the Office of Equity and Civil Rights.
Good morning, Chair Conway and members of the Committee. My name is Zachary Wellman, Equity Policy Analyst for the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. The OECD requests a favorable report on City Council Bill 24-0584. While the OECD would like to submit or submitted a favorable report on the bill and supports the initiatives therein, we would just like to make note for the record that there have been initial conversations amongst the Mayor's Commission of Disabilities that ASL and Braille maybe should have been incorporated in citywide language access plans. Unfortunately, due to the timeline of the bill, the MCD was unable to meet and submit a report with these concerns, but we just wanted to voice them as the agency, the staff, and MCD. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Gabriel Stewart-Zykowitz with the Department of Finance and the Principal Program Analyst. We support the bill and stand by our report.
Thank you. Next is the Solicitors' Office.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Committee. The Law Department applauds this effort to remove the language access barriers. We do have a few amendments. I'm happy to run through those now, or we can allow the other agencies to give their bills, and I can run through them at then.
We can go through them later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Department of Legislative Reference. Tyler, do we have a report from?
DLR.
DLR? No. Yeah. Okay. The Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation?
No, we don't have a report from CHAP.
Okay. All right, the Deputy Mayor for Neighborhood Development?
The Administration supports this legislation.
I sure hope you do. It's your bill. Pratt Library?
We don't have a report from Pratt Library.
Baltimore City School System?
Melissa Broom is on hand.
Wonderful. If you could turn on the... There we go.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Committee. Melissa Broom, City Schools. We stand by our agency report and have no objections to the proposed legislation.
Wonderful. Thank you, Melissa. The Mayor's Commission on Disabilities?
Mr. Chair, MCD did not have a meeting scheduled in time to offer a report on this legislation.
Thank you. Department of Public Works?
Good afternoon. Alejandra Ivanovich, representing the Department of Public Works, were in support of the passage of this bill.
Wonderful. Thank you. Department of Recreation and Parks?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Jenny Morgan, Baltimore City Recreation and Parks. We are in support of this legislation.
Wonderful. Commission on Aging and Retirement Education?
The Commission did not have a meeting in time to consider this legislation, but I did speak with Director Harmon, and she is in full support of this legislation.
Okay, thank you. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhood and Safety Engagement?
John Hoffman, MNC. We stand by our report and full support of the bill, and we have a language access plan and liaison currently.
Thank you, John. Police Department?
Good afternoon. Erin Murphy, on behalf of BPD, we fully support this bill.
Thank you. The Office of Minority and Women's Business Opportunity?
Support.
Parking Authority? Department of Human Services?
Human Resources, I'm sorry.
I was making up departments. Department of Human Resources.
They stand by their bill report. Actually, just saw Director.
And they were supportive.
Yeah.
The Department of Health?
Julia Roche, Baltimore City Health Department. We stand by our report and are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. I'm supposing the Mayor's Office supports this bill?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Fire Department?
Amy Beth Lezier, Chief of Staff for the Fire Department. We are in full support of this legislation.
Wonderful. And the Mayor's Office of Employment Development?
Support.
We're getting to that. The Mayor's Office of Information Technology?
Leila Layman, Chief of Staff for BSIT. We support, fully support this and stand by our letter. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals?
The BMZA takes no position on this legislation.
The Baltimore Development Corporation?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Micah Fetz for the Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. Department of Transportation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Luciana Diaz with DOT, and we have no objection to the bill.
Thank you. Housing Authority?
The Housing Authority stands by their bill report, Mr. Chair.
Can you double-check to make sure we got a report from?
Yeah, I'm looking right now.
Okay, thank you. The Department of Planning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Renata Sutherland, on behalf of the Department of Planning. Planning stands by our favor... Pardon me, our no objection report on this bill.
Wonderful. Thank you. And the Department of Housing and Community Development?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for the agencies or the sponsor of the bill?
I have a question.
Oh, one more. Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs? Mima.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Catalina Rodriguez Lima, Director of the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, known as Mima. We stand by our report and support the bill.
And you guys have a presentation for us, right?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. We wanted to take an opportunity to walk you through the work that Mima has been doing over the last few years and share some of the stipulations of today's bill. So we'll start with some basic information about language access. If I can get this to work. So what is language access? Language access refers to the right of limited English proficient individuals, LEPs, and you'll hear me use this term throughout my presentation, to have access to services, resources, and programs. Who is an LEP? It is a person who does not speak English and has the limited ability to read, write, or understand English. Who are... Next slide, please. Who are the LEPs in Baltimore City? According to ACS, forty percent of the population, of the foreign-born population, is limited English proficient. The most common languages, next slide, please, as you can imagine, is Spanish, with populations in southeast, south Baltimore, northwest, and really spreading throughout the city of Baltimore. The next core languages include, next slide, please, Arabic, and this stems from our refugee population from Iraq, Somalia, and other Iraq, Somalia, and Syria. We have a Chinese-speaking population which incorporates Cantonese, mainly concentrated in central Baltimore. Next slide, please. Our French-speaking population, people from Cameroon, Cote d'Ivoire, Burkina Faso, the Arkango, as you can see, located throughout the city of Baltimore. And then finally, our Korean-speaking population mainly in central Baltimore. Next slide, please. So where does language access stem from? It stems from Title VI, where no individual in the United States should be discriminated based on race, color, and national origin, and within national origin, language. And so, in other words, we cannot turn people away because they simply cannot speak English. This was later reinforced by a federal order from the President, which indicated that any federally funded program needed to take the steps to make sure that people who can't speak English could access those services. And earlier this year, the city administrator issued a directive requiring certain agencies to take the necessary steps to serve people who can't speak English. Next slide, please. So what are the components of a successful language access program? First and foremost, that we are evaluating our programs to determine if our LEP communities are or are not accessing services. It is also required that we have a language access plan for each agency. It is also required that we provide language assistance, and this can mean anything from telephonic interpretation, translation of documents, bilingual staff, any way that we can overcome barriers as we're serving people. It's not enough to have those services. We also have to let the LEPs know that we are providing those services. So notices are required to let people know that, one, we provide a service, but also that we provide ways to overcome language barriers. And finally, that there is a monitoring and evaluating component. In the center of all of this, it is best practice to have policies, laws, and coordinating staff to make it happen. And so that's the work that Mima has been doing over the last few years. Next slide, please. And so our primary role has been coordinating contracts to make sure that those are renewed every three years. We've also centralized telephonic interpretation and translation of documents for agencies to access at no cost to the agency. This has helped alleviate and facilitate administrative burdens where multiple agencies had accounts with the same vendor. We also provide robust technical assistance on how to achieve compliance, or our work in helping them develop a language access plan and so forth. We provide ongoing trainings to frontline staff to know how to support a person that can't speak English. And finally, we monitor the agency's activities based on the language access plans that they provided. Next slide, please. And so what happens when we onboard an agency? We require that a point person in that particular agency is assigned to our office to work with us, one, to develop a language access plan, two, to help us identify frontline staff to make sure that they're trained, three, to identify their vital documents for translation, and as I mentioned earlier, Mima will translate those documents, and to train personnel. We also set up an individual telephonic interpretation account for that particular agency at no cost to the agency. The onboarding process can take anywhere between six to eight months, depending on the size of the agency. We don't require the language access liaison to speak a second language or to be bilingual. We also estimate, based on our existing work, that this onboarding process takes about five hours for the language access liaison every month of the onboarding period. We also have a monitoring and evaluation process which incorporates a biannual language access plan, an annual update from the agency, ongoing training staff, and ongoing technical So today's legislation simply affirms existing federal laws and the CA's directive issued earlier this year. It solidifies the role of Mima as a coordinating entity, but also as an entity that is going to monitor and oversee activities. It also proposes terminology to determine which agencies and departments are going to be required to fall under this law. It establishes steps for the city to identify ways to provide meaningful access to individuals who are limited English proficient in our city. And then finally, this law takes into consideration the work that has been done in the city of Baltimore, but also takes from other cities and jurisdictions that have implemented similar laws. I want to close by elevating two points. In our experience, service delivery agencies welcome our guidance and support. Oftentimes, they don't know how to serve this population. And second, that language access is not a new obligation. I want to highlight that language access is something that needs to be met and should exist with or without Mima's support and guidance. And the purpose of this bill is to create overarching administrative processes and procedures and structures to support the implementation of a successful language access plan that can adapt with the changes in demographics, changes in technology, advances in technology, shifts in agencies' capacities, and shifts in local leadership. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. And I appreciate you, one, especially your leadership on this, both you and the Councilwoman, continuing to think about the fastest-growing populations within our city and certainly bringing out opportunities for growth in the city, but then also some of the challenges that arise, especially with the language barrier. So thank you. Any questions from the Committee? Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks for everybody's bill reports and participation in this. I had one question for the Department of Planning. Your bill report says that you don't think that... You don't take a position on the bill because you don't think that you would be an agency that is, has to comply, or is a covered agency. And as an agency that actually has a lot of people that are front-facing and working with the public, I think that's incorrect. And so I want to understand a little bit more about what happened there, if there wasn't clarity by your department about what the obligations are. And the second part of my question is, you know, I wasn't at the comprehensive plan hearing. I was... Had a major emergency in my district, so I couldn't be there, but I want to make sure that in the comprehensive planning process, that there was actually language translation and opportunities for people who speak other languages to have input on the plan. So first, talk about your bill report, because the reason I ask the second question is because the bill report is lacking.
Thank you for the question. I'll answer it to the best of my ability. So Eric Tiso was the person who wrote the bill report. He's not here today. He told me that the Department of Planning does not believe we are included in the definition of a covered entity, and that is why they... We took the no objection position on the bill. With that said, we already provide a lot of our documents in multiple languages, so our Equity Officer, Alex, is also not here today, but Alex commented that we might be covered by the bill, but we're already doing a lot of the work. So that was the position of the Planning Department. I will say that with regard to your second question on the comprehensive plan, we did have bilingual staff that worked directly on liaising and coordinating with communities that didn't speak English on the plan. I know that... I don't know that the full plan has been translated into any other languages, but I don't... I don't see that being an issue. So I don't know if that fully answers your question.
Well, I'll ask directly to the Director when we have our follow-up hearing, but I just wanted to make sure that that was something that you had thought through. As a follow-up, I would imagine that the Mayor's Office is going to make sure that the Planning Department complies with this bill, even though they think they don't need to be a part of it.
That is correct. And the city administrator has already issued a directive, as they've already said. A lot of their documents are already translated. Assuming, you know, this bill will pass, the Mayor will sign it, all agencies will be in compliance.
Thank you. I just was taken aback by the fact that the department didn't think that they were... Needed to be included. And I don't know whether that was a coordinating issue or whether it was a misinterpretation of the law.
Yeah, I think it was... I mean, the definition is around publicly funded programs and delivering direct public services. I think that may have been some confusion for planning around what that meant, and that led to the bill report that you received.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But we'll have additional conversations.
If I may, Councilwoman Ramos, Planning is... Has been on-boarded as part of our targeted agencies. They actually do have a language access liaison and have been working with us on identifying vital documents and telephonic interpretation and translation. And I'll turn it over to Agatha So, who's our language access project manager, to expand on that.
Councilwoman Ramos, in addition to Director Rodriguez's comments about how we've been working with Alex Bauer, who's the language access liaison, we were... We worked very closely with Alex and the Equity Team to ensure that the comprehensive plan and process included immigrants and refugees. We consulted very closely with them to make sure they are in contact, and particularly ensuring that immigrant and refugees are super... What they're called, super reviewers. So we're providing specific comments and feedback on the comp plan so that it was not just consultation, but also direct engagement with immigrant and refugee communities.
Thank you. I appreciate that detail. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I wanted to acknowledge Councilman Glover, who joined the meeting, representing the 13th District. Councilman Cohen?
Mr. Chair, thank you to the bill sponsor and to the Administration for the collaboration on this bill. I think it's timely and important. Thank you, Director, for your work in Mima. You know, we have a big election coming up in not too long from now, and depending on which way that election goes, you know, we may very well have a President of the United States who is incredibly hostile to our immigrant community. And I think what we saw when this person was President a few years ago was really a lot of fear, and I would even say terror, directed at our immigrant community. And one of the things that I think is confusing to folks is that often when Immigration Custom Enforcement, ICE, initiates actions, they wear a police vest, and communities on the ground sometimes aren't able to differentiate between who is local police versus who is federal police, and it's created enormous amounts of chaos and confusion. And I think last time this gentleman was present, after a couple of ICE raids, we saw just a precipitous rise in street crime against particularly our Latino community and lack of... Just a breakdown with local law enforcement, just a lot of fear and anxiety. And so I think it's extremely important, particularly for BPD, but for all of our agencies, that everyone is on the same page in terms of language access, and that when someone does make that 911 call, that they're able to get the interpretation services, that they're able to get the support that they need. Again, this goes for all public-facing agencies, of course, but, you know, we may very well be in a situation where it's going to be all hands on deck to support Baltimoreans of every nationality and race and stripe. And so I think it's timely that we are codifying this, and again, just appreciate the work that's gone into it, and hope that all of our agencies will work really collaboratively on this and every other initiative that supports all Baltimoreans, but particularly those that require additional support with language. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am not on this committee, but I think this was a great bill. It was long overdue, maybe 20 years ago, but we here, and that's great. I just have two questions. One, will all agencies be responsible for translating all the documents? I don't know who could answer that question, because that is a concern for me.
Thank you, Councilman. So part of our job during the onboarding process of an agency is work with the agency to identify their vital documents for translation. Based on that assessment, we will translate those documents into the city's five core languages, which are Spanish, Arabic, Korean, Mandarin, and French. So we will work with the agency to make those services available to them at no cost to the agency, as long as the documents fall under the definition of a vital document.
So your question is, Mima will be responsible for translating the documents, not the city other city agencies?
That's correct. We have centralized those services, along with telephonic interpretation, to make sure that those resources are available, but also with that, we are minimizing administrative burdens when agencies have multiple contracts with the same vendor.
I have another question, Mr. Chair. Would a bill expose the city agencies to any discrimination lawsuits? I don't know if anybody here from the Law Department?
Yes, I'm here from the Law Department. We have some recommendations. I'm happy to go into all of those, but one of those in terms of any lawsuits, we actually ask that the bill clarify the definition of direct public service. Currently, it says for city residents, since this is based in part on Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, and that covers everyone in the United States. One thing we can do to mitigate any risk of a lawsuit would be to amend that language to remove "city residents." That way, we're being as inclusive as possible.
So you say it's already in the bill?
It's an amendment that the Law Department has proposed as a part of our bill report.
Mr. Chair, I know I'm on the committee, and I think committee members and the council probably want to see the members in advance before we get it on the council... Meet on Council floor.
I appreciate you, and you're always welcome in this committee, Councilman.
Thank you.
We're not going to vote this bill out today. Um, we, we're, we're not going to vote this, this bill out today. Um, there, there's still some work to be done, is my understanding, with the sponsor and the administration, uh, before we're ready to vote it out. To that end, I think it would be helpful at this point to actually hear the Law Department's recommendations. And are there any other, um, uh, agencies recommending amendments?
Uh, the Health Department recommended a technical amendment, which we're taking as friendly.
Okay. All right, we'll start with the Law Department.
Um, so recommendations from the Law Department, we have a few that are definitions and then a few substantive. Um, first, we recommend an amendment to Section 531B. That's the definition of covered entity, which I hope will help address, um, Councilwoman Ramos's concerns, um, about who is included in that. Um, we're asking that that be defined as any municipal agency as defined in Section 2J of Article 1 of the City Charter that delivers a public service. So that should be as inclusive as MEMA is attempting to be, um, but also specific enough that everyone understands where they fall. Um, we're also asking for an amendment to the, to Section 531D, which is the definition of direct public service. Um, currently, as I said, that limits that to a city resident, since this is based in part on Title VII, which includes everyone who's in the United States. Um, we recommend amending the language to remove "city resident" from the definition there. We're also recommend, recommending an amendment to Section 531I, which is the definition of major public contact. Um, as written, the definition appears to be void for vagueness because there's no language that outlines what entails an interaction. Um, so we recommend clarifying specific interactions that constitute major public contact. We know that might vary, um, and hopefully that will also help clarify who this applies to. Um, we also gave an amendment, a possible clarification, to define it as an employee with major contact, to be one who averages a certain number of contacts with a member of the public per day, but understanding this isn't being voted out today, we know that might be subject to some changes. Um, and then finally, for the definition of vital documents, the bill requires the translation of all vital documents in Section 5341. In briefings from MEMA, we understood that to, um, that the only documents that will be translated are ones that have been created by the city, um, because there were some questions about what happens with state or federal documents. Um, so the Law Department recommends we amend the language, um, for 51, 50, Section 531N, from all vital documents to say all city-created vital documents, to reflect that only the city-created documents will be required for translation. Um, and then under Section 532B1, which is the Language Access Liaison, um, we did see the Department of Human Resources report and suggest the bill be amended to include DHR, um, so the bill conforms to requirements of Section 97I of Article 6 of the City Char- excuse me, Article 7 of the City Charter with respect to civil service employees. Um, and it would just insert a line that says, "In consultation with the Department of Human Resources where required." Um, and then finally, um, under grantees, um, the term, which is Section 533, um, the term reasonable steps is not defined in the bill, so as written, it's void for vagueness. Um, so we recommend that the bill be amended to define the standards that would be needed to meet in order to be in compliance with the law. Um, it could also be amended simply to require grantees and sub-grantees to provide meaningful access as early or defined in the bill. Additionally, under Title VI, once an entity receives federal financial assistance, um, the federal government has jurisdiction over contractors, so we also recommended that we include contractors in that section. And then finally, um, in the role of MEMA or its successor agency, which is 536, um, we recommend aligning the lang, the language in the bill with the budgeting process and the city charger, city charter under Sections 6, 5, Sections 5 through 9. Several times during the briefing, the topic of funding came up and who would be funding this. MEMA gave great explanations in the briefing, but just to have that in the bill for clarity.
Thank you. Um, you guys did a lot of work on it, apparently. I, I appreciate it. Um, I noted we don't have, uh, your bill report on the record yet.
It's online?
It's online now. Okay. Um, so, yeah, that'll be helpful, and I guess we're putting that into a draft format for amendments. Is that?
That's correct. Well, we'll be collecting all the, um, comments and making sure that we have a comprehensive, uh, set of amendments for our work session, um, and vote next time.
Okay.
And the, I mean, but we've, uh, accepted all of these. Um, there's some modification of some of the language as you discussed, but we'll be, you know, working through it.
Great. Any questions about the amendments described? Okay, so no questions. Uh, we are going to move on to public testimony. Um, so for folks who are interested in testifying, um, please use the sign-up sheet in the back, which is now up front here. Um, we're going to forge two minutes. Uh, I want to encourage folks, we have quite a busy day today. If you don't need those two minutes, please don't, don't, don't feel like you need to fill all two minutes. Uh, we appreciate brevity. Um, yes, ma'am?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Arinika Clark, and I'm the Legislative Liaison for DHR. Um, so DHR supports this bill. However, we are emphasizing that there are some substantial employee-related and budget considerations to account for when assigning the Language Access Liaison role as outlined in the bill. Um, the first consideration is the performance requirement. Um, the Language Access Liaison position outlined by MEMA adds, uh, significant duties that fall outside the scope of, um, current jobs classifications. Um, these duties are not part of the original job description, so they cannot be classified as other duties as assigned. Um, therefore, agencies may face challenges when it comes to requiring employees to take on these additional responsibilities, uh, without creating a new position, as this task exceeds what the employee was originally hired to perform. We also have the out-of-tithe-pay consideration. If a current employee is tasked with taking on the duties of the Language Access Liaison, um, they may be eligible for out-of-tithe-pay, which might increase the city's payroll costs. We also have salary increase. Um, if the employee's job description is updated to formally include these new responsibilities, it may potentially lead to, um, salary increase due to the expanded scope of their duties. Um, since the Language Access Liaison role does not require bilingual skills, um, DHR is recommending appointing a MAPS employee, that's the manager, a professional society employee, um, who may be eligible for a stipend. Um, once the selected employee is no longer responsible for the Language Access duties, they would no longer be eligible for the stipend. Um, however, if a non-exempt or a union-represented employee is appointed for this role, um, they could be entitled to overtime pay for any duties performed outside their regular shift. Um, so we are recommending that, um, we recommend establishing Language Access Liaisons within MEMA, um, using a shared services model across the city. The Language Access Liaison program may face compliance challenges as employees assigned to this role might require additional compensation, or they might refuse the role due to the possibility of extra responsibilities, um, that might interfere with their original job duties. Thank you.
And, um, Mr. Chair, just letting you know, we're going to work through all of that with, uh, DHR for the next, um, round.
Okay. Great. Any questions about, um, DHR's commentary? I have lots of questions, but, uh, I won't, I won't get into the details here, I think. I'm eager to see how we work out those concerns, yeah. Um, thank you. Um, now, we're going to go into public testimony. Once again, folks, you have two minutes. Don't feel pressured to fill all two minutes. Brevity is certainly appreciated. We have quite a list of folks who are looking here to testify. And then quite a few meetings after, where we'll have folks testifying. So, um, first, we have, um, Daniella McDonald. And as you walk up, uh, if you could press the button on the right, the, the red light will come on and you can restate your name.
Good afternoon. My name's Daniella McDonald. I'm with the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. The Baltimore City Community Action Partnership Centers provide essential services such as rental utility and eviction prevention support. Ten per, 10.3% of the city's population speak a language other than English at home. The Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs plays a vital role in ensuring equitable access to vital services and that language barriers are reduced. The five CAP centers operating across the city serve an array of constituents from various backgrounds. Many families come to us in crisis and should not have the added stress of language as a challenge to accessing vital city services and information. The CAP centers are here to support all families, and we look forward to seeing the continued support and commitment of the city of Baltimore to be an inclusive city where all residents can live, work, and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniella. Uh, next, we have Julia Sarmiento? I hope I said that correctly.
Sarmiento?
Please press the button to the right. There we go.
Good afternoon, members of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. My name is Julia Sarmiento, and I am the Tenant Services and Eviction Prevention Program Manager at LEDC, overseeing the tenant services in Baltimore City. I am grateful for the opportunity to testify before you today and ask for your support on this bill. We urge you to favorably support this bill to codify Baltimore City's Language Access policy and to solidify its commitment to language access for all city residents. On its best days, local government acts as an advocate for those citizens who are, are most often less voiceless, ensuring that all our neighbors have the ability to access and participate in the activities of public life. I'm here today to ask for your support on the above-mentioned bill to help make Baltimore the city that will not only open its doors to immigrants, but that will make immigrants and newcomers feel welcome in a city where 10.3% of its population is speaking a language other than English at home. Between 2021 and 2023 and 2024, LEDC helped over 1,000 Baltimore City families, of which more than half were of Hispanic origin. The majority of the head of households do not speak English and depend on having their children interpret for them. LEDC has been able to help these families due to our staff being fully bilingual, but the work does not provide them with the final answer of their application. On a weekly basis, we receive calls from tenants requesting the status of their applications. We have heard many of our clients complain about the service they receive when they call or personally visit Baltimore City offices requesting assistance. It is sad to hear that a client is torn away because they're unable to communicate with a Baltimore City staff only because they cannot speak English. Help ensure Baltimore City Government is in compliance with federal law by giving your support on this bill. We know this work does not end here, and as an immigrant community continues to grow in Baltimore City, we want to be better prepared to help make them feel welcome and that they can call Baltimore City their new home. For this reason, I respectfully urge you to support this bill. The passage of Bill 240584 would further solidify the city's commitment to equity and to advancing the rights of all Baltimoreans regardless of the language they speak. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Oh, he just turned it off. There we go.
Good afternoon. My name is Juliana Valencia Banks. I am a resident of District 7, a proud member of the Mayor's Hispanic Commission, and an immigrant from Peru. I want to express my strong support for Bill 240584, which would establish Baltimore City's Language Access Policy. This policy is crucial for guaranteeing that all city residents, including immigrants and refugees, have fair access to vital services, programs, and essential information that can enhance and save lives. Additionally, this change would ensure that Baltimore City agencies are in compliance with federal law, which unfortunately, oftentimes, they are not. As a 16-year resident of Baltimore City and a former human service provider, I have seen firsthand the challenges faced by individuals with limited English proficiency, particularly the significant barriers encountered when trying to access basic city services and crucial information. Language should never stand in the way of accessing vital services, understanding public health guidelines or feeling included in our hometowns. This policy is vital as it guarantees that all residents can access city services in a language that they understand. Without an official Language Access Policy, many Baltimore City residents are left disconnected from city services and are not welcomed in the rooms where decisions are made. To make Baltimore a truly inclusive and just city, it is crucial that all residents can communicate effectively. I strongly urge the committee to approve Bill 240584 and make this important policy a reality, ensuring that no resident is left behind due to language barriers. Thank you.
Thank you. Chrisely De Los Santos? And then I have Anne Marie Fa, after her.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and community members. Thank you all for being here today and giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Chrisely De Los Santos, and I'm a Youth Education and Program Manager at CASA, an organization dedicated to empowering immigrant communities and working-class families with a large membership here in Baltimore. I'm here today to express how vital it is to make Baltimore Language Access Act, um, this bill today, um, permanent of our city's commitment to its resident. Many immigrants and refugees' families face language barriers that prevent them from assessing services like healthcare, housing, um, assistance, and education. These are not just minor inconveniences, um, these are barriers that leave people disconnected from resources that they need to live a healthy, um, uh, stable life and also participate in our community as a whole. Language access can be transformative. At CASA, we host workshops for parents and caregivers every month, bringing in service providers and critical information. Yet, we often hear stories of family unable to get help simply because no one is able to speak their language, or because the language services are not utilized correctly. Um, this leaves people, um, not being able to access services, but also allows, leaves them vulnerable to, for people to take advantage of them, charging them for services that should be free, all because they couldn't navigate the system. When people can access information in their own language, um, it creates tragedies for many families, and it doesn't allow them to grow the way that they would like to. Um, this is especially personal for me, because I had to miss a lot of school growing up to be able to translate for family members, and sadly, I see that every day with the youth that I work with. Um, they have to miss school in order to translate a doctor's appointment when their family needs support applying for bill or, um, city services. Um, so I'm just here today to ask, uh, you to support this bill. It's not just about access, it's about ensuring that every person in our city feels value, um, and is able to access the services that they need to succeed no matter what language they speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Anne Marie Fa? And after, I've got Lucia Islas.
Good afternoon. My name is Anne Marie Fa, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I currently live in District 12. I have been living in Baltimore for 30 years. I'm an immigrant here from the Ivory Coast, Côte d'Ivoire, in 1994. I am proud member of CASA in Baltimore. I am here to favorably testify in support of Language Access for Baltimore City. As a native French speaker, I have been fortunate enough to learn the English language. When I first arrived in Baltimore, I depended on a family friend to help me with translations. I knew how to write in English, but was still learning how to speak the language. My current dream is to open a restaurant in Baltimore that is African cuisine. I have many family and friends who do not speak English and would benefit greatly with Language Access across the city. I currently help my community with this issue because they come to me to help translate and navigate services. I have received, uh, assistance from CASA with the support of the BNEAC program, which was created through MEMA. This report helped me pay my bills. I am in favor of MEMA to lead implementation of Language Access throughout the city for all language speakers of Baltimore. This program can motivate city residents to learn different languages and continue to promote a welcoming environment for everyone. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Uh, Lucia Islas? And I've got, uh, Gary Einie?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lucia Islas, a resident of Baltimore for 18 years and a community leader. I'm here to express a strong support for Bill 24-0584, which seeks to codify Baltimore's Language Access Policy. which seeks to codify Baltimore's language access policy. This policy is crucial to ensure that all residents, including immigrants and refugees, can access essential city services, programs, and information in a language they understand. Many in our community, including myself, myself, have faced significant challenges when trying to access services due to language barriers, especially during emergencies. Language access is not just about fairness, it's about safety and inclusion. By for- formalizing this polis- policy, we ensure all residents can fully participate in civic life and access critical resources. I urge the community to approve this bill and make Baltimore a more inclusive and equitable city. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Gary Einie or? Please, please correct me. And then after Gary, I've got Maureen Wambui.
It's, um, Ame. It's all right. Well, greetings, everyone. Um, Assalamualaikum. Ni hao. Buenos dias. Bonjour. Sac passe. The reason why I start this way is to show you all the importance of languages that is well-spoken throughout Baltimore area. My councilman is over here from our 42nd District, 45th District. Good to see you, Councilman. I'm here as a, um, Haitian leader in the Baltimore City area to not only support this bill, but to urge all of you to look deep inside, to actually think about what we're trying to do here today. Man, again, uh, my organization's called Comité IIT, which is a Haitian organization. I'm also the proud president of the Maryland Coalition for Immigrants' Rights as well. We express our deeply enavering support for this bill, which codify Baltimore City's language access. Why this is important? Languages is essential to fostering inclusive and ensuring that all voices, like mine's and all of yours, to be heard throughout the city. Thank you for your time, and I hope we don't have to go through this once again. I appreciate all your times. Merci beaucoup.
Thank you. I'm sure we hope, hope we don't have to as well. Uh, I think we'll get this done. Uh, Maureen Wambui, and I've got Omari Jeremiah next.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Maureen Wambui, and I'm from Kenya. I immigrated to the country, to the U.S. nine years ago. I was fortunate enough that I was able to learn English before I came here, and I'm a financial coach by day. Um, so the reason why I'm here today is because I just want to give you an example. I have a client, comes to me, tells me that they have an issue at the bank. Okay, what's the issue? I take the client to the bank. The reason why I take the client to the bank is because their account was closed. They received documents, the vital documents, in English. Client doesn't speak English. Why did they receive documents in English? So, he goes to the bank to ask somebody to help them, read the document, or they need to know what's going on. Why was the account closed? The client goes to the bank, doesn't get help. Instead, his information is changed in the system because nobody gave him an interpreter, nobody read the document for him. They end up changing his, his information in the system. Now he can't access his money. His information was changed. It's a whole mess. So this is the kind of things that I deal with on a day-to-day. And language access, this bill, I support it 100% because I, I don't like seeing my clients suffer. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Omari Jeremiah and Ashley Rivera. Rivera, excuse me.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Omari Jeremiah, and I'm the founding director of Next Generation Language Access. Our mission at Next Generation Language Access is to train high school students to become professional interpreters. And for this reason, I'm here to advocate for Bill 24-0584, um, because we serve Patterson High School, we serve Digital Harbor High School, as well as Ben Franklin High School, training students there to become professional interpreters. This bill resonates with our mission to provide, um, career for of high school graduates after they graduate from high school as an interpreter. Uh, someone that works as an interpreter earns $51,000 a year, um, if they work full-time. So, support of this bill, um, resonates with our organization's, organization's mission to ensure that everyone, regardless of the language that they speak, is able to receive the services they need to move forward in life, as well as being sure that our high school graduates have, um, employment opportunities, viable, um, employment opportunities after they graduate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Ashley Rivera and Jessica Vasquez. Asher Rivera? It, it's already on.
Good afternoon. My name is Ashley Rivera Ruiz, and I am here in support of Bill 24-0584, which will codify Baltimore City's language access policy. As a language teacher intern, I work to serve immigrants, refugees, undocumented immigrants, new Americans by offering language classes and no close to parents of students enrolled in high school. I support Bill 24-0584 because language access is a way to preserve the civil rights of the limited English proficient population and allows people to communicate through a new language and break language barriers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Jessica Vasquez and Krishvik Naraja after.
Muy buenas tardes a cada uno de ustedes y en general. Este el propósito de nosotros de estar acá es para alzar la voz, para, para tener más acceso, para personales, para traducir. En no solo en ciertos lugares sino en... Okay.
Good afternoon, everybody. Our purpose here today, um, is to have more access and to be heard, um...
Eh, no solo en ciertos lugares sino que en general, como en escuelas, en hospitales y otros lugares.
Not just in general locations, but also schools, hospitals, and other places?
Porque hay lugares donde a veces no hay quien traduzca, entonces a veces nos sentimos excluidos porque no podemos como que dar opinión o hablar.
Because there are places where there isn't interpretation, and so we feel excluded and not heard.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, um...
Buenas tardes. Um, también lo mismo que digo mi compañera. Estamos intérpretes para la escuela de la ciudad de Baltimore.
Good afternoon, everyone. As my coworker says, uh, we need interpreters for the school.
Can, can you state your name?
Yes, Ashley Rivera.
No, no, uh, the gentleman who just spoke.
Abel Hernandez.
Abel Hernandez.
Thank you, Abel.
Gracias. Thank you.
Yo es muy golpeado que que le jaló ser. Eh, toque maquetzaje y yo le quise decir que yo. Eh, muy buenas tardes a todos. Acabo de decir en mi dialecto. Yo sé que muchos no me entendieron, pero eh, estamos aquí por parte de la Escuela de Commodore. ¿Qué necesitamos?
Good afternoon, everyone. Her name is Paola Vazquez. Um, she just spoke in her other language. Uh, she knows, um, not all of us understand what she just said, but she's in here representing of the... Of the school Commodora.
Necesitamos soportes en la escuela, necesitamos traductores. Eh, también, ¿cómo se llama? En la escuela hay muchos padres que a veces no saben ni hablar el español.
We need interpreters at school. We need those supports because there are many times that parents that don't, doesn't know how to speak the language, Spanish.
Porque ellos hablan un dialecto, entonces les cuesta bastante comunicarse porque son inalfabetos también.
And it's hard for them to communicate because they, they speak a dialect language, uh, and it's hard for them to communicate.
Por eso estamos alzando la voz y para que nos escuchen porque a veces uno quiere comunicarse o decir algo, pero a veces hay personas tan finas que a veces tratan la manera de escucharlo y le dicen a uno aunque uno no lo pronuncie, también el inglés ellos dicen es perfecto. ¿Y hay otros?
That's why we are raising our voice to be here, and I know there's people who is nice and understand us to raise our voice.
Y hay otros que dicen que no lo entienden a uno, entonces por eso estamos aquí y gracias por este programa que hicieron para escucharnos a todos los padres. Lamentablemente, no pudimos venir bastantes por causa de la situación que nos trabajan otros padres, pero aquí estamos presentes.
And also, there's some times where people doesn't want to hear, listen to us, uh, they don't care about it, but we feel. Uh, and there's many other people, other parents, who wants to be here, but for this situation, because they work in, they couldn't attend here.
Gracias por el tiempo y gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for your time and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Hola, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Rosalía Fabiola. Nosotros somos el grupo de la Escuela Commodora y necesitamos que nuestra voz sea escuchada.
Hi, everybody. Good afternoon. My name is Fabiola. Rosalía Fabiola. Um, is, we are here today, um, with the Commodore families. A, perdón, this is the Commodore. We need that our, we need our voices to be heard.
Necesitamos que los niños tengan más acceso en la escuela y necesitamos que ellos aprendan el inglés y eh, más que todo ellos aprendan también el español y muchas gracias.
And we need the students, um, to be able to be... I'm so sorry.
Necesitamos que los niños, eh, aprendan el español y también el inglés.
And we need the students to learn in Spanish and also to learn in English. Thank you.
Gracias.
Buenas tardes a cada uno de ustedes. Mi nombre es Irma Maldonado y soy una madre que representa a muchos padres que están ausentes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Irma Maldonado, and I am a mother of a kid, um... And I am here for, and representing the parents that are not in here today.
Oh, estoy aquí también para, oh, pedirles de favor que nos ayuden a poner traductores en los lugares muy importantes como es la escuela, en la oficina central, porque, oh, en las escuelas hay personas que con niños autistas, oh, también otros estudiantes que no tienen este, no han estudiado la universidad porque no les han comunicado a los padres.
I am requesting you guys to please, uh, put interpreters on public schools because they're also kids with autism and people, students, uh, from college, university, and they are not able to get, um, interpreters.
Gracias por escucharnos y pasen feliz día.
Thank you for listening to us and have a great day.
Gracias.
Buenas tarde. Mi nombre es Felicita Cano.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Felicita Cano.
Pues yo también estoy lo mismo aquí con el grupo que necesitamos más interprete en la escuela de nuestros hijos, en la hospital, en la oficina central. Y por eso estamos aquí para que nos escuche. Muchas gracias.
Um, as well, um, as the other people that is here too, I'm here representing, and representing to for requests for new interpreters, uh, to public schools, uh, hospitals, offices, so that we, better for us. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Zuleika Luna. Soy una mamá que tiene de un niño de tercer grado en unas escuelas públicas de la ciudad.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Zuleika Luna. I'm a mother of a kid who, who is in third grade.
Um, al momento, uh, hoy me encuentro aquí para decir que la misma problemática que existe en todas las oficinas públicas existe en las escuelas públicas de la ciudad de Baltimore. Lo mismo, la interpretación, que necesitamos más personal en las escuelas, en todos los lugares, pero principalmente en la escuela.
Um, and I'm here to speak about the interpreters as well. We really need those personnel in the schools.
Yo entiendo que este planario no es, no incluye las escuelas públicas de la ciudad, pero siento que deberían de reconsiderar incluirlas porque si bien es cierto, tal vez no están bajo la ciudad, ¿verdad?, las escuelas, sino del estado. Pero necesitamos de que...
Um, I know this isn't part of the Baltimore City's schools, but I'm requesting this because we really need this in the Baltimore City public schools, and I really need you guys to make us part of it.
Que nos tomen en cuenta también, porque hay una gran problemática. Entonces, sí queremos que nos tomen en cuenta, que las escuelas también deberían de ser parte de este mismo recurso que van a tener las demás oficinas de la ciudad.
We want to be listened, and we also want to be a part of it because as the same, the offices, um, are allowed to have these services, we want as well.
Muchísimas gracias por escucharnos y darnos la oportunidad de expresarnos.
Thank you so much for listening to us and let us express what we feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for assisting with the interpretation. Um, uh, we had one other person that was signed up. I'm not sure, Krish Vignrajah, if you're still here.
Good afternoon. Probably not the ideal day to be wearing my flats, um, but uh, it is wonderful to see, uh, friends on this committee. Uh, my name is Krishomara Vignrajah. I'm the president and CEO of Global Refuge. We are the largest faith-based, uh, national nonprofit dedicated to welcoming children, refugees, and other immigrants. Uh, we operate all across the country and in Guatemala, but we are very proud to be headquartered here in Baltimore. Our mission is to foster more just and welcoming communities. We've been grateful for the city of Baltimore, um, supporting that mission, including through a program that we partner on, the Baltimore New American Access Coalition, and this bill would add even more to Baltimore's welcoming spirit, so we are really grateful for the leadership, uh, that you all have shown. Language access would ensure that new Americans are better equipped to integrate into their new communities. It would put them in a better position to develop the skills, access information, and strive for economic independence. But we all know, um, that it wouldn't just help our clients, it would help our communities, it would help our companies. Um, you know, we run a number of economic empowerment programs, and we have seen time and time again how it would help our local businesses better succeed in hiring and growing their businesses. This is a common sense bill. It responds to a growing population of residents who speak other languages but want to integrate and contribute to our local community. I know we all want to continue to build a vibrant and dynamic Baltimore, and we need to ensure all of our residents are set up for success, and so I urge the city council to pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that is all we have for folks signed up to testify. If there are any other folks that wish to testify, please take your moment now. Uh, you should turn it on, um, on the right, right button. Wonderful.
Hi, sorry about that. I thought I was signed up. Um, I'm Carolina Paul. I'm the managing paralegal from the Housing Team at the Public Justice Center, and I'm testifying in support of the bill to codify the city's language access policy. Our housing team works with Baltimore City renters who are facing eviction or whose landlords are not making critical repairs. The PJC serves a high proportion of limited English proficient people. On the housing team, I often advise renters to interact with city services, whether by applying for rental assistance at BCAP, requesting a code enforcement inspection, or by filling out a water for all application. Sometimes they report that a city agency hung up on them or told them to come back on a specific day. When services are only available in English, it creates confusion and a lack of trust in city services. It's unfair to send these capable adults through a maze of referrals when their English-speaking neighbors simply have to call the right phone number. neighbors simply have to call the right phone number, stand in the right line, or visit the correct website. Providing meaningful access to city services across language barriers isn't easy. If it were, we wouldn't need this legislation but it's an essential part of making sure that immigrants can thrive in Baltimore. Please approve Bill 24-0584.
Thank you. Any other folks looking to testify? All right, seeing no further interest, I understand, directly you have a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I failed to mention that our office received 62 letters from organizations and individuals in support of this bill and I wanted to sum it as part of the record.
That's quite a few letters. Really appreciate the work that you guys are doing, making sure that folks feel welcome to the city and have all the, all the access they need to services. It's really, really important and being that of course this is the fastest growing population within the city, I think it's a challenge that we need to be ahead of and really appreciate the effort on this bill. We're not voting on the bill today, we still have some work to do as folks understand. The law department's amendments still need to be drafted and there are other considerations that we need to work out in order to address the Department of HR, their concerns but councilwoman, any final comments before we close the hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the committee and obviously thank you to Mima and the administration for moving forward with this effort. Thanks also for letting our residents have a voice today, they're often not heard and so that was really important. And so I'll be working with the school system since most of the comments were about what was happening there but this is very important for our city, it sends a large, very forceful signal that everyone is welcome here and I look forward to continuing to work with the administration and with Mima on the bill but also on the initiative, thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna take a one-minute recess on this bill so we can get folks to clear out before we jump into our next bill which is a voting session. Hey folks, we're gonna get started, for those that are... All right, we're gonna get started on our next hearing. Councilwoman? You're welcome. I'll call you back when we need to get to the vote. All right, our next hearing is, will become a voting session, this will be for Bill 24-0507, Studying Report, Infrastructure in Urban Meadows, for the purpose of requiring the Baltimore City Administrator, the Office of Sustainability, and the Baltimore Commission on Sustainability to submit a report to the mayor and city council assessing the costs and benefits of installing and maintaining 100 acres of low-maintenance and self-sustaining native plant communities, otherwise known as urban meadows, and mapping vacant lots in existing areas with packed dirt that could be transformed into urban meadows, and providing for special effective date. This bill was introduced on April 8th, 2024, sponsored by myself. We had our first hearing on this bill a month ago or so and since then have also had a hearing of the Sustainability Commission which they really leaned into this bill, liked the idea, but actually wanted to take a bit further and had some really good recommendations in consultation with the Office of Sustainability and the Sustainability Commission. I'm accepting all those amendments, I think they actually make the bill much more stronger and hopefully more effective should we do this study. So with that, we can jump right into that but first I understand HCD has bill reports, they wanted to report on the bill, so HCD, floor is yours.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we were not initially referred to this bill but we basically want to make sure that we're in coordination with all of the agencies just to avoid having our plans colliding with the development of the urban meadows. We think it's a cool idea, we just don't want, you know, to have a particular lot that's in some stage of development or in some stage of planning then be designated an urban meadow and people to get upset, so.
Absolutely. This is just a study and report at the moment. I do hope that the study and the report help inform potential opportunities to test out the idea.
Another part of our bill report was our request to have our Office of Policy and Research be a part of that mapping exercise.
Sure.
To those similar concerns that I just spoke to.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Yeah, thank you and I'm glad you guys were interested in being a part of it. So with that, we've got the report from HCD. I will turn it over to Ava Richardson, the Director of the Office of Sustainability, to walk us through the recommended changes from the Sustainability Commission.
All right, thank you Chairman and good afternoon members of the committee and members of the public. My name is Ava Richardson, Sustainability Director for the Baltimore Office of Sustainability, representing the Office and the Commission on Sustainability today. The Office of Sustainability supports this bill and recommends that the bill be, that any study and report related to urban meadows be aligned with our current planning initiatives across the city which include our 2018 Green Network Plan, the 2019 Sustainability Plan, as well as the Climate Action Plan and Disaster Preparedness Plans that were updated within recent years. The Commission on Sustainability, as Councilman Conway and the Chair mentioned, did host a special hearing on this particular bill with specific recommendations to address some of the language. Now, the recommended amendments are quite long so I'll try to summarize them as efficiently as possible. On page one, in line two, it was suggested that infrastructure in meadows be striked and substituted with sustainable vegetation management. Part of this was to get at some of what is trying to be addressed in this study and report when it comes to the maintenance cost as we heard from the councilmen when we had the special meeting. On line six, also suggesting that self-sustaining be striked and substituted with ecological benefits. Some of these upcoming changes are kind of all related when it comes to striking transformed interurban meadows and substituting that language with selected as sites to pilot low-maintenance and ecologic beneficial, ecologically beneficial vegetation types and management practices as alternatives to mown grass. And so that is a repeated amendment that comes in to lines 14, 19, 21, and 22. Also on that same page, there's some kind of typographical area, typographical changes that the Commission suggested as it relates to line five inserting up to after maintaining, striking vacant lots, as well as inserting some language around maintained by the city to clarify areas that are maintained by the city. Also on page one, line 15, it was suggested that the language which, that this following statement be inserted in line 15, which are defined for the purpose of the study by the USDA as habitats dominated by grasses and other herbaceous species that can serve as an important ecological role in wildlife, so basically suggesting that the USDA definition for urban meadows be incorporated into the bill. And some of these additional changes include language that relates to evaluating and comparing the following factors for installing and maintaining low-maintenance and ecologic benefits, ecologically beneficial vegetation types and management practices as alternatives to the current practice of installing and maintaining mown grass. And that includes such practices as financial cost savings or considerations as financial cost savings, community impact, emissions, safety, aesthetics, biodiversity, urban heat island effect, and so on. And I think that summarizes the amendments unless you want me to go into any further detail?
No, that is perfect. I'll just broadly summarize the changes to the recommended study here. Essentially, the Sustainability Commission liked the idea but wanted to broaden the scope of the idea so that it can encapsulate forested areas and reforested areas as well, so incorporating trees and not just meadows. So it changes the name of the bill and broadens the scope of what we would explore so far as vegetative management principles, which I thought was a fantastic idea, which I'm ashamed that I didn't initially put that in the bill. So really appreciate the feedback that we got from the Commission. They were all very thoughtful questions and appreciate the work that your team Ava's put into advising on this bill. The only other thing that was not in the recommended amendments from the Sustainability Commission or the Office of Sustainability was lengthening the time of the bill. So what I'm going to do, we don't have this in the drafted amendments now but it's on second reader. Right now, the bill gives 120 days from the enactment. I'm suggesting we extend that to six months or 180 days which hopefully gives the Office plenty of time to pull together resources and execute on the study. With that, any questions from the committee? Seeing no questions, I want to move to a vote but we don't have a quorum. We're gonna go ahead and grab Councilwoman Ramos so that we can get on with this bill. So we are, we just went over the amendments, the amendments expand the scope of the bill and I'm proposing on second reader to extend the length of time for the Office to complete the study. With that, I want to extend an opportunity, if there's a motion to accept the amendments, propose. Moved by Cohen, seconded by Glover, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments have been accepted. Is there a motion to accept the bill as amended? Moved by Cohen, seconded by Glover, Conway, yes, Glover, Ramos.
Yes.
And Cohen. All right, all in favor, thank you, wonderful and this will move on to second reader at the next council meeting. Thank you, guys. And what we'll do for this, as I mentioned earlier, we're gonna extend the length of time to complete the bill to 180 days. Wonderful, now we can move on to our next bill, which is a resolution. Okay, we're gonna take a two-minute recess. All right, we're gonna come back in session. We've got two more bills to hear, or one bill, one legislative oversight. Our next bill is for 24-0233R, Informational Hearing, Department of Transportation, Street Paving Timelines, for the purpose of requiring the Director of the Department of Transportation and inviting utility partners to discuss the schedule for road resurfacing and the manner by which the repaving schedule is developed and communicated to affected communities. This was introduced on April 8th by myself and just to give a little background, in many of my neighborhoods over the last few months, we've been seeing a significant amount of work done by utility partners within our neighborhoods and the work has been, of course disruptive, which we always expect and that's to be understood. I think what I have seen in my personal experience and I wonder if my colleagues have seen anything similar is when those roads are repaved, the complete road is not repaved, so we'll have one lane paved and not the other, leaving in some of our neighborhoods, some roads looking wonderful and great and others still in relative disrepair. And this is frankly, it's been a problem in some neighborhoods and what's been happening is my office and I would suggest probably even my colleagues probably get a lot of complaints about this, I know I do. And so I wanted to have an opportunity to understand what our strategy is, where do we intend to respond, when do we intend to repave, if we do not, how do we communicate that, and how do we coordinate as best as possible to strategically address paving within our neighborhoods in light of our partnership with our utility partners who need permits in order to do this work. I think we know that there is expected to be a ton of work done across the city over the next, let's say, decade because of some very important utility work but I'm curious how we are thinking about this strategically over time, how we're working together day in, day out, and what we can do to make sure that we're communicating as best as possible with constituents. So I wanted to invite all the folks here that I could, that I could get here and not everyone is here today. We sent invites out to, of course, the Department of Transportation, thank you Director for attending. We also sent out invitations to Verizon, Comcast, BG&E, Crown Castle, and probably more other people. But today we have here BG&E and we've got Vicinity, I appreciate both of you guys attending. Are there any other utility partners in the room outside of BG&E and Vicinity? No.
DPW.
Oh, DPW, how dare I. Appreciate you and DPW as well, of course, an obvious partner, utility partner, duh. So appreciate the opportunity to pull everyone together. I know you guys work incredibly hard, especially DOT and making sure that our roads are safe. I want to give the Director an opportunity to speak to her approach thus far on this issue.
Thank you, Chair Conway and committee members. So yes, what the approach was taking was to give a full review of all the components that goes into the resurfacing, both the DOT-led effort as well as street cuts and then of course there are certain ADA implications to that as well. So the slides before you kind of walk us through those areas. Which I just said right there, all right. So getting into the street cuts policy, so we, beginning in 2017, DOT initiated developing the street cuts policy. So there were some historical changes about the more internal policy and how jobs were managed but then this created some concerns and that's what we heard from the communities at that time about the paving of the trenches and then, you know, if you had a pavement joint and then you had a patch, the implications of that and so there were certain pavement failures. So we went through to try to develop some standards that would provide clarification for the public and utility partners of the expectations of a street cut restoration. And so there are three sections that were added. One is the traffic control plan section, which is required with some any permit, the formal stop work order process, previously not a part of street cuts. And so this is, we'll be finding type of true issues out there. And then also there's an appeals process that's documented in there as well. So in June of 2020, the street cuts policy was posted for public comment. As a courtesy, we did notify utility partners and they were notified and allowed to provide information during the comment period. We were working towards making the policy effective in 2021 but we then had to redraft it based on the Administrative Procedures Act and then that prompted additional public comment, public engagement, and going through and getting that posted. So effectively, June 22 is when the policy came through. And as shown there, it's developed to ensure that there's proper excavation within the right-of-way, that there is complete restoration to meet those pre-existing conditions. In some cases, based on standard changes and things, it might not be pre-existing, it might be current new standards, the proper use of the right-of-way while the work is occurring, so that means the traffic and things like that, as well as, like I said, to establish some clear consistency and guidance for those requirements. From a permit standpoint, the applicant, they must provide the applicant information, the contractor, location, description of work, start date, end date. The traffic control plan is needed to properly address both motorist and pedestrian, bicyclist, non-motorist type of traffic throughout the work zone and the notification is sent to the DOT street cut section 48 hours prior to start of work. I think that's all there. So now getting a little bit more into the restoration requirements which I think hits on some of what your concerns are. Per City Code Article 26, subtitle 15, if more than 50% of the road is disturbed, then the entire block must be milled and resurfaced. And so that's gonna be your asphalt road or also your asphalt overlay type of roads. So it's gotta be milled curb to curb or if it is more of like a divided type of roadway where there's a median, then it's gonna be curb to median essentially. Additionally, if an entire intersection must be milled and resurfaced if there is a diagonal trench throughout the intersection or again if more than 50% of that intersection is disturbed. Our street cuts team is very active with inspections, there are both reactive and proactive inspections. There are both reactive and proactive inspections, but most of our inspections are proactive, as shown there, at ninety-nine percent. Again, all of the excavations in the city must be reported to the street cuts office by the permanent applicant, and then there's a street cut notification form that is included. This is then added to our city works street cuts database, and so each sector has an assigned inspector, and that inspector is assigned approximately twenty-five active construction locations to inspect daily for that proactive investigation, and then we track the results as well. The street cuts offices has one citywide steel plate inspector, and they will also look at those concerns from a three-on-one standpoint, as well as other stakeholder complaints. The reactive inspections are only one percent, and those are gonna be more led through our three-on-one items listed there, and those are typically inspected within twenty-four hours, and we work with the contractor, the permittee on any of those issues, we issue fines accordingly, and that fine clock does not stop until they have sent in photographic proof of the issues being addressed. One thing I didn't mention was for the restoration work, there's like this one hundred and twenty-eight day timeline, so we recognize that contractors are continuing to work within an area, there's gonna be certain impacts, so they are doing temporary restorations, and they are supposed to be monitoring them, but our street cut inspectors also monitor this as well, and so if those temporary patches are not being maintained properly, then we, again, communicate with them, issuing applicable fines, and make sure that they get those restored. And then, once that work's complete, then there's an allowance of one hundred and twenty days for them to come through and do the full permanent restoration work. So if it's like one travel lane, parking lane, or if it is the whole roadway, they've gotta come in and start resuming that work. So now, getting into our resurfacing, we have both external and internal resurfacing efforts. So here, for our external resurfacing, the listed factors there is what we consider when we identify and select our resurfacing locations. So the road classification is going to get into focusing primarily on highly traveled arterials, including principal, minor, and collective arterials. Roadways that accommodate a high volume of bus and truck traffic typically deteriorate at a faster rate, and therefore, they warrant more frequent resurfacing. Areas with a high volume of pedestrians are prioritized, and work in this area includes enhancements to the pedestrian and multimodal infrastructure, such as ADA ramps, bike lanes, and crosswalks. An important factor, of course, is equity. Resurfacing is in part priority-based on equity zones to revert the historical disinvestment. And so the department employs an Equity Composite Index Scoring System, which ranges from zero to one hundred to help guide us so that we ensure that we are equitably dividing the resources and addressing the needs throughout the communities. Key metrics such as crashes, speeding, and others are used to determine whether to implement traffic calming measures along the footprint of resurfacing projects. So of course, we know that we now have our complete streets policy, and so we've changed the way that we did resurfacing in the past, where now we're looking more holistically about the needs of that corridor in that community to address more of the concerns. There's additional efforts to minimize conflicts with ongoing or upcoming utility work, so although there might be a roadway that is in certain condition, we're not gonna come in there and resurface it if there are some, you know, imminent utility work or other things need to be addressed before the roadway is resurfaced. And then finally, resurfacing prioritizes work that cannot be done in-house, so there are certain aspects that are beyond the scope of our internal crews, and then it gets referred to the external team. The external resurfacing list is initially developed by DOT, is reviewed by the administration, and approved by the mayor, and then, of course, that is shared with the council. For the internal resurfacing locations, roads are very much prioritized based on the condition. We assess the three-on-one service requests, we look at the volume and the type of requests that are coming in. Also, you know, when we address potholes, if there's a large extent of them, then it requires more regular maintenance efforts from our crews, and so it's better for us to resurface and address those issues. We do consider council requests, and we also look at, all those that are listed there, we also look at it as far as like a geographic standpoint in trying to kind of spread around and kind of hit different neighborhoods as well. If there are drainage concerns in a particular block, then that gets referred over to the Transportation Engineering and Construction Division to get into more of the design aspects and handle it via an external contract. We usually propose three locations per city council district. The exact length of that can vary just based on the location, and through that effort, if we identify digital locations, or sometimes council members identify additional locations, those may be rolled over into the next construction season, or, you know, following one after So like I said, historically, resurfacing was a place in kind, and so it was really just a notification of work. So usually, the notification of work is gonna be that seventy-two-hour timeframe, but because we are now evaluating the corridor for any of those safety improvements and other needs, and making potential changes to the striping and other improvements along that roadway, then we've developed a heightened level of engagement on our resurfacing projects. So really, the scope of that project's gonna determine the level of notification and engagement, and obviously, our external resurfacing jobs are gonna have much more communication than our internal, internally typically more of like a notification, because it's one to maybe three blocks, and it's really just a notification about this work is coming, council members, of course, are aware ahead of time, and then we do the posting and the notification seventy-two hours. Let's see. Oh, let me go back. And I'll touch on it in another slide, but with both our internal and our external resurfacing, we develop an annual orange cone list, which is available in both a PDF form on our website, as well as a GIS kind of dashboard mapping site that's accessible where people can reference it as well. And we publicize that once we finalize those lists and provide regular updates on our website. All right, so then getting into the timeline, so for a location, for external resurfacing, which is where we bring in our contractor to do the work, the design can range from about four to six months. The signing and marking plan is developed by our Traffic Engineering Division, and so that doesn't necessarily get started right when the design for the resurfacing project itself starts. It can start more towards the tail end of that phase, it could be going on during construction, as they're working through each and every individual location, so there are multiple lists, so obviously, the amount of time it takes them to develop those signing and marking plans depends on the extent of the work and the amount of locations that they're resurfacing, and any type of scope changes. Overall, projects that fall in the one to three million dollar range can last about one year for the resurfacing, recognizing that they're doing curb repairs, adjusting utilities, building, reconstructing ADA ramps and things like that, and then those in the three to six million dollar range can last two years. Internal's a little bit different, so we don't need to do the design like we do for external, but we do have to do the design for the ADA ramps. So per intersection, it can take about two months for the survey and design, and then for the actual construction, the resurfacing really can be done in anywhere from two to seven days, of course, weather permitting, but the ADA ramp construction can take two weeks per intersection. This is an example of our PDF version of the orange cone list, so it tallies the number of lane miles being completed by our maintenance forces internally, as well as our external team. It also has a color code list of what's in progress, what's completed, what's under construction, or if there's any locations on hold for various reasons. And then we just track that throughout the season. Here's an example of what our dashboard, our GIS site looks like, so you can go there and look and see it, and zoom in on your neighborhood or other areas throughout the city to see the extent of the work. We'll now transition into ADA compliance requirements. So ADA, of course, is a guiding principle for DOT, and is for the work in all the right-of-way. So it's not necessarily just the work that DOT does, but it's also the work that others do in the work in the right-of-way. ADA requires that curb ramps be provided at pedestrian crossings to facilitate access of persons with disabilities, and so it also allows for the safe crossing of obstacles which could block or endanger pedestrians with disabilities, such as wheelchair users or those with vision impairments. Title II of the American with Disabilities Act and Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three requires that state and local governments ensure that persons with disabilities have access to the pedestrian routes in the public right-of-way. An important part of this requirement is the obligation that whenever streets, roadways, or highways are altered, curb ramps are provided where street-level pedestrian walkways cross curbs. And so an alteration is a change that affects or could affect the usability of all or part of a building or facility. Alterations of streets include reconstruction, rehabilitation, resurfacing, widening, and other type of projects. And so because resurfacing streets constitutes an alteration under ADA, it triggers the obligation to provide ADA-compliant curb ramps where pedestrian walkways intersect those resurfaced streets. And so all this gets brought together, tied together, because of these things listed here. So ramps must be reconstructed to be ADA compliant if the entire block must be milled and resurfaced, an entire intersection must be milled and resurfaced, or the full width of a crosswalk is resurfaced. So that concludes my overview. Thank you.
Thank you, Director, that was really, really helpful, actually. I have a number of questions. I do want to give our utility partners an opportunity to add in as well. Okay. And do we have a report from parking? I think they referred on the bill. Tyler, a report from parking?
Give me one second.
Sure. And I'll give an opportunity for DPW, should you have anything to add on to what DOT has stated thus far?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, this is Alejandra Ivanovich, representing the DPW. First, I would like to say, if you have any additional questions, our Chief of the Office of Engineering and Construction is present, and he will be more than happy to answer any of your questions. As far as this, we stand by our bill report with no objection, and we'd like to add that the Department of Public Works undertakes a street restoration and resurfacing as part of our ongoing efforts to enhance water and wastewater infrastructure. We collaborate closely with the Department of Transportation on these projects to ensure that they are executed efficiently and effectively.
Thank you. And then I'll turn it over to our private partners. We can start with BG&E.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Kevin Nelson for Baltimore Gas and Electric. We're here to answer any questions, but I don't have any comments for them.
Okay. And Vicinity?
Good afternoon, thank you. We're well aware of the initiative of street cuts. We work with DPW and DOT on a regular basis, but no other questions or comments at this time.
Okay. Wonderful. I have, oh, yes, and HC reports from the City Solicitor's Office.
Desiree Lucky, on behalf of the City Solicitor, we approve this for legal form insufficiency.
Thank you, Desiree. All right, I will open up to questions, and I'll start with a few. So part of the reason why I wanted to have this conversation, I think, is because we're seeing our utility partners do a significant number of work, including DPW, within our roadways, and the thought occurred to me, I wanted to know, how do we prioritize where we do our paving? You talked a little bit about this in the presentation, which is helpful, but I think, in my mind, as you were talking through it, the question for me is, do we do regular assessments of our roads, specifically in neighborhoods? And then, how does that inform where we decide to prioritize? It may not make the decision for us, we still make that decision, but do we have a sense of the relative condition of roads, especially as our utilities and utility partners are working with us in respective neighborhoods? So I was curious there.
So there was a, I'll say a sorry done, a payment condition. We basically have a payment condition index, so it's a number of years old, we are working to get another one done throughout the city, but that gives numbers based on the condition of the roadway and assessing different things for the roadway. And so that is one of the factors that goes into our evaluation and selection of routes in our priority list.
Is that like a map, or?
No, it's like a spreadsheet.
Spreadsheet? With like each road and like a score? Got it. And then, when we're looking at where we want to do our work, or actually, before we get to where we want to do our work, when we're looking at where utilities are already doing work, do we at all factor in where we decide to do work based on the paving condition index and where we see utilities already doing work, such that we know, for instance, they're already gonna pave, you know, some portion of the road? Would it make sense for us to pave the other portion of the road? How do we look at situations like that?
So I am aware of a couple of locations, more so with our internal resurfacing program, where there were locations where half the roadway was paved by utility, and we identified and recognized that the other half was in a poor condition, and so we did go through and resurface the other half. But the external program's a little more challenging because of the utility companies' timelines, programming their projects, and then, of course, like I said, there was about a four- to six-month design timeframe for us. So essentially, we're looking, kind of working on a year-to-year basis. So once the CIP is approved, and we know how much we're gonna get for resurfacing, then the team is able to then assess, you know, how we're gonna kind of divide the money for each of the sectors, and then identify the roads. And so depending on if it's a two-lane roadway, or a two-lane roadway with a parking, or a four-lane roadway with a parking, obviously, that roadway's gonna cost, be more expensive, and of course, then the additional curb repairs, utility adjustments, ADA ramps, and other things that go into that cost as well, as well as the complete streets and safety improvements. So literally, on an annual basis, once we know how much money we have, we're then looking at all of those factors. Now, say, for example, last year, we may have identified certain roads we already evaluate and said, these are kind of in poor condition, but we can't maybe get all these roads done this year, then that's kind of like on a pending candidate list, there you go. It's on a candidate list, so then, when the next year comes, then we can revisit that and say, okay, so do we need to do this here? Anytime we develop our list, we are looking to see if there are any upcoming utility projects, really to avoid those conflicts. And so recognizing a lot of times, those utility projects are multi-year projects. So in that case, if we know that there's the work, then we're gonna pause on that one and select a different location as an alternative.
Yeah, it's interesting, because we're, I remember having a very similar conversation when I worked in city stat, but from the other perspective. What was happening before is that we were paving roads, and then utilities would come in and do planned work right after. This hearing is exactly the opposite. Utilities are doing work, they're paving some of the roads, and we have no plans to come behind and finish the work, and so there's almost a miss deficiency opportunity there. So either or, I think it's a matter of calibrating, in my mind, and trust me, I'm sure this is way more complicated than I understand, what it takes to coordinate our four-to-six-month design timeline with some of the planned work from our utilities. And I guess this next question actually go to some of our partners, and of course, DPW. I'm sure for some of the work that we're doing, we plan this out likewise, four to six months in advance, and we can probably, and probably do with the permitting process, notify DOT in advance, or do we wait until later? I have no idea how long it takes for utilities to get a permit, but let me refine that question. First, how long does it take for BG&E, Vicinity, DPW to get a permit to do work in a road, even if it's like a large project?
Honestly, that really varies, because some of them can be a larger community-type of project, impacting multiple roads, and then another one might be like here on Calvert Street, you know, where there's, from here to here. You know, we do a lot of utility coordination, even in cases like the Calvert Street project, where I think Vicinity had a project, and then DPW had a project, and so we did some of that coordination and collaboration, things like that. But it, I guess you have to factor in, and I don't, DPW or others have to talk about that, so like the timeline for them to identify a project location or project need, for then them to do the design phase, and then actually start construction, and then complete construction, And then complete construction, recognizing that in construction, there's frequently things, unexpected things that happen and delays. It would be very challenging for us to properly manage our budget on an annual basis and try to deliver our projects to the community if it's somehow contingent on everyone else's schedules. What I can say is that if there are particular locations of concern for you or the other council members where half the roadway was done and you think the other half would be, should be done, kind of how we go through and do the analysis for the other, for the, just for our routine process, we will be willing to look at those roadways and then see where they find, where they score and evaluate them to see if it's like, oh, well, yeah, this one does score high. If so, we could come in here and do the other half of this roadway with the other half being done. And then that way it could be kind of, you know, integrated into our process. But it would be better for that to be done after their work is done, after the restoration work is done. Otherwise, it's going to be really challenging.
Sure. This question is for BG&E, Vicinity and DPW. I'm curious, as you plan your work into the sort of paving seasons, because of course, just like DOT, you can't do your work year round necessarily. A lot of the stuff you have to patch. How far out do you generally plan some of your work? Some of it, of course, is, you know, you have some issue with infrastructure and you have to do what you have to do. But do you have like significant lists year in, year out of what you have planned to do?
I'll start for BG. Yes, so the, it's anywhere between six and 24 months. Generally, the larger projects, it might be multiple miles, will be closer to that 24 months from inception to construction. Smaller, more reactive projects, obviously not, as the Director talked about within DOT. We have some short cycle things where those types of coordinations would be impractical.
I think for DPW, we have different scale of projects. And sometimes, you know, we do try to plan out years ahead. But I want the committee to realize that we do deal with emergencies. And that's a factor that I want you guys to take into consideration. And like I said, Tim Wolf will be more appropriate to discuss as far as our contracts go.
Tim, please join us.
Good afternoon. Tim Wolf, Chief of Office of Engineering and Construction. As far as our infrastructure, our water program is the most aggressive. We replace about 15 miles a year. And we actually been exceeding that 17 and a half last year, 17 to the year before. But all our projects are planned out four to five years ahead. And we do map our projects. It used to be on Vista. Now it's, I think, Open Gov. That so we can coordinate with DOT, with our work. And then sometimes we do collaborate in trying to work through some of these paving projects as well as with BG&E. Actually, I think it's in Canton, we're coordinating. They're going to be going in there and doing some work. And we're going to come behind them so we can coordinate that. So we do have a plan ahead and it is mapped in our, like I said, Open Gov now. And we do have a whole GIS risk model that we use to develop the water infrastructure. The sewers, a little bit more limited, and those are longer term projects and we coordinate with DOT as far as permit, traffic control plan, paving restoration plans as well.
Now, the only thing I would like to add, so like you talked, Tim's talking about the collaboration. So, you know, one major example of that is like Drew Park Lake Drive. So they concluded their construction.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Drew Park Lake Drive? So they concluded, of course, the DPW construction work. And they were going to need to do some, you know, pavement restoration under the street cuts policy. But we all recognize that the extent of the roadway, the condition of the roadway was. Yeah, it was subpar. It needed attention. And so we, you know, like a 50 50 partnership, we said, okay, well, we're going to come in here. And so instead of just looking at just the footprint of where they would restore and where their work was, it's extending a longer section. So we've already gone through and completed all of the ADA ramp construction. And we started this weekend on our miller resurfacing efforts. So, you know, that's one example where there are times when we do collaborate and we have other conversations to look at what we can do with other utilities wherever we can. But it's just not necessarily in every single location scenario.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you, Tim. And Vicinity?
Yeah, I think it's a timeline starting on that. It's job specific. So generally, six to 12 months we plan out. Larger projects, 24 months. Just to speak to the collaboration between Vicinity and DPW and the other city agencies. We're working with DPW right now on Calvert Street on running a, I think they're running a domestic water main up Calvert. And we're also running our chill water lines up Calvert. So we're definitely collaborating on that project, just so we don't run into those issues where we come in, you guys pave the road after your lines in, then we come in and tear up the road again. So we're trying to do it all at once.
Yeah, I appreciate it. It sounds like on the utility side, we're, we actually have much, much more planning in advance with, of course, exception for emergencies that might allow DOT when prioritizing certainly within roads that have much more infrastructure underneath, the ability to plan in advance, how to coordinate. One, to make sure that if some of the work is done, but it's not complete, we can do that. But then also more especially, I'd say more importantly, that we don't repave a road and then they have to come behind. That would be the worst case scenario in my mind. It's super helpful to understand. I understand Councilwoman Ramos, she have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I think that the coordination among the various entities has improved since I started yelling and screaming about York, Old York Road, I'm sorry, Greenmount Avenue and 32nd Street. That was a total nightmare. And so I'm grateful that I think there is a little bit more collaboration. Also, we get the entire list from BG&E every beginning of the year, the council members do. So at least we can see what they're, what they're doing, not the emergencies, because, you know, emergencies. But I had two questions. One is the biggest thing that drives me insane is half crosswalks. Okay? So if someone is, BG&E is doing work, I'm just using BG's example, is doing work and they don't have the full, they don't, didn't do a half, you know, but they're in a crosswalk, they're going to resurface and put the striping based on the complete street striping that we've asked for. And the rest of the crosswalk doesn't get redone and it looks crappy. And so what I'm hoping that we can figure out is how we can make sure. Crosswalks are extremely important. And we've seen, we've got a lot of crosswalks redone in my district and we're actually seeing a really positive impact of nicely striped crosswalks. Can we like mandate that crosswalks all have to be redone and not just halfway?
So although we could mandate it, recognize that the utility companies are going to say, well, we didn't impact that area and all that. But what we are working on is trying to have more of a like a notification process for those locations. And then that would be where, you know, and there are locations, of course, where there are faded crosswalks. So they come in and do that half, which is brand new. The other half is faded. So there wouldn't be as much eradication. Our internal crews could then come back and then install the other half of the crosswalk. You know, we have to look at those scenarios where we have to do the eradication, but we still have the ability to do that ourselves as well. So trying to come up with more of a notification process. And then we've talked many times. So I know the locations and so we've been getting some of those locations in and trying to address some of them. But I think collectively, it's just kind of getting that going so that we have a process. So that's something that we kind of discovered once the policy came out. And then we started seeing it pop up once people were doing the work and completing the work and doing the restoration work. So that is something that we're working to fix.
Yeah, I mean, we get the, at least the plan. I get the emergency, we can't always. But, you know, the list, and I am assuming you get the list from DPW, and so there's got to be a way to figure that part out. The other question I had was, it was, you had mentioned in your presentation that the whole roadway curb to curb has to be redone when half of the road is affected. Is that correct?
Yeah, 50%. Yeah. So it could be, it could be longitudinal. It could be some over here, jutting going over there. So it's just kind of overall.
Oh, because my, because I will use Falls Road as an example, you know where I'm going with this. Falls Road got, and Greenmount too, frankly. Greenmount got water conduit and then we had to do the resurfacing. And it was just one little single lane that they were using, but we got curb to curb, which I appreciated. My understanding is that's, you know, increasing costs, but it is really important that we get that curb to curb. And it was, but it was just one, not even a single lane, but that was like the hole that they used to be able to do it. So I guess, and then we had another problem with Falls Road because it got resurfaced and then B sit had to go through there, but that's a different issue. So I guess I'm just trying to find clarity. Is it when we disturb the roadway significantly with like the one, you know, one little patch that everybody uses to go in to do the work? Or is it literally like the entire half of the roadway?
Yeah, so it's, if you look at it from like a square footage standpoint, like an area standpoint, we're looking at was 50% overall impacted. So it doesn't have to be in one set travel lane or in the parking lane. If this section had some transverse trenches and you had some longitudinal, but then over here you had some other longitudinal trenches and overall 50% of that block was impacted, then that would trigger the curb to curb resurfacing.
Okay, that, so that's helpful. Thank you. Because that also explains why there was a couple of things on, in my district that weren't, that didn't end up going curb to curb, but that was still important. And then I guess the last thing was around the resurfacing projects that you're doing. We know there are going to be fewer of them because now you have to add the, the, what's it called? The ADA compliant work on the curbs. And so is that getting to be supplemented by some state money because we have to comply with ADA? How's that working?
So no, one thing to clarify is that so for our external resurfacing contracts, we have been doing the ramps. So that's not a new thing. What's new for the external resurfacing is now us looking to potentially change the striping plan, to add in bump outs, to add in flex posts, to add in other things to try to do traffic calming and other things collectively from that complete street standpoint while we're doing the resurfacing. In the past, it was just putting back what was there. So if you had the double yellow and you had your skips and that was it, that historically, that's what would go in. Now you're seeing where we're putting in additional striping and additional amenities. So that is pulling a little more from the cost.
Which is mandated by street, complete streets, which we passed in the prior term. I thought it was just the ramps that were mandated, but I'm glad, thanks for reminding me about this.
So what's changed from the ramp standpoint is how we're doing the internal resurfacing. So with the internal resurfacing previously, it was just the paving was being done. So now we kind of have a two-stage approach where our internal crews are going to be able to do the resurfacing, but we have to have a contractor onboard to come in and do the ramps. So that's where, like if you look at our CIP, for example, we've put in a line item there for funding for ADA ramps for internal resurfacing, for example. So that is coming through, you know, through our CIP process. So whether it's HUR, you know, we are leveraging whatever federal dollars or other state dollars we can bring in for all of our programs.
Yes, we just had a long conversation about this the other day where all of us were present. So thank you. I appreciate those clarity, those clarifications. Thanks.
Councilwoman Glover?
I'll wait. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Glover. I had just a couple more questions and hopefully we can move on. I think the other, other thing that I really wanted to focus on in this hearing is communication, communication with communities. In your presentation, you noted that we list the operate, we list our paving schedule online? Where can we find that? What's?
It is on BCDOT's website, or if you just do a search for BCDOT orange cone list, it'll bring you right up to our resurfacing page. And on there, you'll see almost like a little screenshot of the GIS where you can click on that to get to that dashboard. Or down below it, there's a link where you can click and access the PDF.
And when do we typically update it for the coming paving season?
So it's, it's just because of some of the recent changes we've had to implement with locations and additional work and the ramps and things like that, it's taken a little bit more time recently to get some of that. Like this year, I think it was, what, around June timeframe that it actually went up there because there were still some things we need to finalize. Our goal is to get that done earlier, like pretty much in that springtime, once that paving season is starting.
But even though we, we updated it on the website in June, we'd already started paving, of course, before.
If there were, yeah, so if there were some locations, yes, that were already confirmed that we, you know, contractor or internal resurfacing teams were able to go in and kind of start, then we did go in and start that while the entire list was being finalized for publishing.
Okay. And then last question for BG&E. So BG&E, I know you guys are doing your gas regulator installations across the city. And that means we'll be touching a lot of certainly homes, but even in many instances, many streets across the city. Do we have a plan or timeline for that work that might help inform BG&E's, excuse me, DOT's paving schedule?
So what I can say, as I kind of alluded to before, we have, let's say, the next 24 months planned out in principle. As you've heard from other operators here, those dates have ways of changing due to other concerns in the community and other infrastructure providers. We have provided that to DOT and we have formally through Invista. I think we're still getting our sea legs on the new platform to understand how to make those work for us. But yes, we've provided that information to the city.
Okay. And same thing, I guess, same question for Vicinity and for DPW.
Yeah, we regularly communicate with DOT, DPW on all our projects that coincide in the same areas. So I'm not sure if we're.
How far in advance do we share with DOT?
I'd have to get back to you on those.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
And DPW?
I want to mention a couple of things. So we usually communicate with other agencies for about a year or two in advance. But one comment that Councilwoman Ramos said, and is that the Office of Legislative Affairs has been working closely with the Office of Engineering and Construction to inform each councilman of any sanitary or water contracts that are going to be occurring in their district. Just so that they are aware of any, you know, and we inform them, inform them of all of the details such as traffic, you know, different traffic or changes in traffic patterns or parking restrictions, et cetera. We also have, our community liaisons go out to each community and sort of, you know, engage with the community and give them as many details as possible regarding all of these projects. But to answer your question, it's about one to two year processing events.
That's super helpful. I think in order to bring this to a close, unless any other folks have questions, I think that the goal of this hearing, and I think what I'm hoping to drive us toward is really two things, efficiency and transparency. And I think because DOT is sort of responsible for the right of way in roads and the condition of those roads, but we have multiple partners who are doing work within those roads that then have a bearing on how your work plays out. Trying to figure out as best as possible where we expect work to happen so that we don't pave or understand where work may happen so that we do pave, interestingly sometimes. And I think that's what kind of spurred this hearing. I think it's just an exercise in efficiency that I think hopefully will save the city time and certainly money as a result. So that's where my head is here. And then I think the transparency piece is in always communicating, certainly with council offices, and you guys do a good job of that. But as much as possible, also thinking about how we can communicate with residents, especially when our utility partners are in their neighborhoods. I think the difficult part is that you're not necessarily in the neighborhoods, but when I say you, I mean DOT. Our partners and of course DPW is in the neighborhoods, DPW will do that work and our partners will do that work respectively. But at the end of the day, we still go to get those questions and then inevitably they come down to DOT. So whatever we can do to make sure, you know, in instances where we know we're not going to repave or it doesn't make sense in certain instances, or we have to prioritize because of equity or road condition or limited funding, that we can communicate that with folks, that we can manage expectations. It certainly helps my team and I would guess my colleagues as well. So with that, I have no further questions. So with that, I have no further questions. I really just thank you guys for, you know, dealing with me through this. And I, we've had a couple of meetings in advance and I, I hope you, you understand what I was trying to get out of this resolution. And I definitely appreciate the work that you guys do and certainly our partnership and the sharing of information as we work on Invista. Hopefully we continue to smooth out this process. Um, but, um, yeah. Uh, with that, um, technically this is a resolution, so there's an opportunity for public testimony. If you are here to testify on this bill, um, please feel free to step forward. No one has signed up. I don't see any hands raised in the chat. Um, so public testimony is closed. Um, we probably will not revisit this, so I'll just call this to a vote. So is there, um, is there a motion to, um, accept the resolution? Uh, moved by Ramos, seconded by Glover, um, Conway, yes, uh, Glover, Ramos.
Yes.
And Cohen. All right. Well, this resolution will move to second reader at the next council meeting. And we will move on to our final, uh, hearing for the day. Um, and fortunately, all the same people need to be a part of this conversation.
Do you like a two-minute recess?
Sure, we can take a two-minute recess, uh, let everybody take their, their break.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we are back and this is the Public Safety and Government Operation, uh, Government Operations Committee meeting. And we're going to move on to our final bill. Uh, and that is L O twenty-four dash zero zero seven zero Legislative Oversight Underground Infrastructure, uh, Safety. Underground Infrastructure Safety for the purpose of inviting relevant city agencies and utility providers to discuss recent safety issues with Baltimore's underground infrastructure. Um, this was introduced on October 21st, so just this Monday, um, by myself. And so the reason why I thought it was important for us to have this conversation is because we have had a number of fires in, uh, in our conduit, uh, over the last year. Um, to date, we have noted 10 underground fires. Um, more specifically on Charles Street, which is the most recent one, we've had three underground fires just this year alone. Um, and this has had, this has been a huge inconvenience, I would say, but also I think a safety concern for people and businesses in the area. Um, and I think it's really important that we as a city are trying to, one, understand what's going on here, what's gone wrong and what we can then do to make sure that this does not, uh, continue to happen into the future. Um, you know, from my understanding, um, I, if, seeing what we're seeing thus far, I would not be surprised if we had another fire sometime soon in the next couple of months. And so, um, I think it's urgent, um, that we as a city and certainly the, the partners in this room begin to put our heads together, um, to understand what's going on and really think about what needs to change in order to prevent this from happening into the future. So, um, once again, really appreciate, um, our agencies for being here and also our partners who are carrying over from our previous meeting. Um, I thought it was helpful to have this discussion following the previous discussion, um, in part because it's all the same people. Um, that said, um, we have here today, we've got D O T, um, Director. Um, Director, anything you want to add?
Um, do you want me to like give remarks or?
Uh, if you want to give remarks, you are always welcome.
No, I didn't, I mean, I didn't know what, I didn't know, yeah, I mean, we can just start with whatever questions you all have, I think.
Sure. Um, we've got the Fire Department and Chief Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chief Wallace, Baltimore City Fire, a couple of members of our, uh, command staff. Happy to answer any questions that you'll have.
Appreciate it. We also have, um, B G N E, we've got Vicinity, we have D P W. Anyone else I'm not capturing at the moment? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, we've got, um, O E M in the building. So, um, I think we've got most of the relevant folks here. We invited actually today, uh, a number of other partners. We invited Verizon, we invited Comcast, we invited, uh, Crown Castle. Um, and, uh, those folks weren't able to join us today on short notice. Um, but they are all relevant, I think, to the infrastructure that was damaged. Um, and was, they're relevant to certainly the maintenance of the conduit in that area. Um, so first, I think it would be helpful for me, and I'm not sure who can answer this better, whether it be the Fire Department or D O T, to just explain, um, what we know about the fires that have been happening.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Um, I'll start off with, with the most recent fire. I can give you a quick incident synopsis if you like. Um, so at approximately, uh, zero three forty-eight hours in the morning, um, our units were dispatched to the Verizon building at three twenty-three North Charles for, um, fire alarm activation. So there were audible alarm bells sounding. Um, it was a limited response based on, um, the, the call profile. So it was one engine and one truck. However, when they arrived, they noticed smoke conditions from the manhole, um, out in front of that building. They, they requested the remainder of, um, what we call a box assignment or a full first alarm assignment, uh, multiple units and additional resources brought to the scene, um, just based on, uh, the, the conditions that they saw as well as, you know, past practice, past experiences with that. Unfortunately, those, those fires and those situations, we, we cannot engage in direct, um, suppression activities until the power is disconnected. So, um, once BG was able to, uh, de-energize, uh, the system there, they were able to, to mitigate that fire. Obviously, there was also fire, um, I believe it was in Brown's Arcade, uh, they sustained some fire damage as well. Um, a lot of our efforts beyond that have been, um, follow-up, a lot of inspection type activities. We unfortunately had to apply, uh, temporary cease and desist, uh, to some of the businesses there based on the loss of power and the fact that their fire safety systems and their fire suppression systems were non-functional. That was why those orders were, um, were, were put on those businesses.
In the conduit?
I'm sorry, say again.
You said, uh, that fire suppression systems were not operational.
Inside of some of the buildings.
Inside some of the buildings.
So, you know, we, at, at that point, we have, um, you know, I, I, I stopped short of calling them violations. We have fire code, um, concerns. And, you know, obviously with not, with no power, they don't have smoke detectors, no audible alarms. There's no pump for the sprinkler system, so, um, cease and desist was applied. I am told that as of, uh, twelve fifteen hours today, power's back up, cease and desist has been removed. So we're definitely moving in the right direction, but that's, that's a synopsis of this particular incident.
Uh, that's good to hear. And, um, I, I don't know if B G N E or any of our other partners here can speak to any service, uh, outages. Have we resolved all of those concerns yet?
Yes, all customers have been restored.
Wonderful. Uh, we don't have any, uh, fiber folks here to, um, provide the same update. That would be helpful. But, um, certainly from my understanding, um, power is out, fiber is out, folks didn't have communication and otherwise. And, um, I know there were a lot of businesses that were unable to open as a result. I, I think, um, so I, uh, do we, do we have the ability to tell it all for any of the three incidents, certainly along Charles Street, but even in other incidents, wh- what may have contributed to the fire or what may have even caused the fire?
So I, I'll speak simply from the Fire Department perspective. Um, we do not have the ability to, to place a fire investigator underground. Um, given confined space laws, there are certain trainings that fire investigators would happen, would have to have in order to go subsurface, underground and attempt to, um, determine that cause. The challenge beyond that is when, when we investigate, uh, fire scenes, to the best of our ability, we need to see a fire scene in its original state as much as possible. So, um, just like the police would investigate a crime scene, they don't want people walking in their crime scene. They don't want the evidence manipulated and things like that. A fire investigator's, um, uh, investigative process is very, very similar. So it makes it extraordinarily difficult, especially if fire is located under the street and in conduit, right? We, we just simply can't get to that. We can certainly develop, um, hypotheses, if you will, but again, there, there are challenges with doing that as well. This last fire right now, um, we currently have it as undetermined, but I don't, I don't believe the investigations outside of the Fire Department have been completed. So we oftentimes will use a lot of that data, um, and, and other cause determinations to try to determine a cause ourself as the Fire Department.
Do, do we have the ability to determine contributing factors? For instance, um, there has to be something to cause a spark, uh, something to cause a fire. Um, so certain things have to happen, we know by way of basic science, in order to start a fire. Certainly we have power lines there, but there's something else, a power line with, uh, rubber, um, with rubber coating over it should not, you know, spontaneously combust.
I'll jump in.
Oh, please.
No worries. So, um, I guess Director Johnson, D O T for the record. Um, so right now it's just still very early. Um, there, there will be, uh, we're still coordinating with different stakeholders and everyone, so there will be some form of investigation. And, uh, uh, all, but kind of what you're referencing, contributing factors and things like that, I'm sure is going to be evaluated in that process. But we, there's not a lot of details we can give really about that just because it is still so early. So I imagine those are going to be a lot of the things that'll be in the discussion.
Um, and this is the third fire on Charles Street. The first happening, happening in, in January. Um, do we have any insight on maybe what caused the two previous fires before this?
We do not.
Okay. Do we, do we expect to have any further information?
So we're, so we're looking at, um, just the recent issues and that's going to be some of the discussion as a part of this investigation process.
Okay. Can you elaborate? Recent issues as in?
Well, like, like the January fire, the, the September fire. So, so any of the information that, that anyone can share to help the investigators in this process will be shared and be considered throughout that process.
Uh, I, I'll, maybe I'll give you the motivation why I'm asking those questions and it's probably obvious. My, my theory here is we can't do anything until we understand what the problem is.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, that, that for many reasons is not sufficient for folks who live on that block or work on that block or are managing businesses on that block. And so it's hard for us to, I would suggest, and maybe I'm wrong here, but I would suggest it'd be hard for us to ensure that this won't happen again or even predict when it might happen again because we're no closer to narrowing down those contributing factors. Or maybe we are. I, I just, I, I would like to know, um, do we have a timeline? I mean, does it take a year to do this kind of analysis? Is it impossible because, you know, um, evidence to the causation of, um, this has been burned? I, I just, I don't know. I.
Well, so obviously, you know, I, I know that, that we're dealing with multiple ones recently. Um, but I think getting into more of a robust investigation is something that especially is new under my leadership or new with the part, those of us that are here, really. So, um, I don't know, um, really what the timeline, I would hate to give any type of speculation because we want to give accurate, clear information. And, and so since the fire occurred, we've literally been in emergency mode. Emergency mode to get the power and services restored, to get the, the conduit and everything reconstructed, to get, um, you know, services to those that were impacted and address those immediate concerns from the residents and the businesses. And, and so, you know, we of course did have, on this past Friday, um, under, you know, the directive given under Mayor Scott, we had a convening of a underground services work group. And so we pulled together all the different, um, utility partners that are not only in the conduit, but also right in the right-of-way area that could have a factor. And then there were certain key city agencies like, um, O E M and Fire Department and others that potentially have some involvement in this to really talk through what happened, which somewhat Chief just shared, um, what their response was, what their experience was, what were their restoration efforts, and to talk through what type of investigations they might be doing. Um, many people just shared that for them, it's really just kind of pulling out fiber and things that was burned up and replacing and restoring their services, you know? And, and so investigational, uh, efforts are limited for a lot of the, the partners. And so, but, but that is something that we all kind of understand that, that a lot of people have that question of why did this happen? Or why has this happened on other occasions? We also want to get to that answer, but we just, it's just way too early for us to be able to give any specifics um, about the why and what that investigation looks like.
Yeah, I, I think, he- here's my trouble. Um, while I know it's very soon after the fire that just happened, um, we've had multiple fires in the last year in this same area and, you know, other fires across the conduit. Um, and so it doesn't give me much assurance that there's really anything that we're going to do differently. And if we're not going to do anything differently and we know these things are happening, it's going to happen again. And that, that's my concern.
Mm-hmm. No, understood. And I guess the one thing I can say is that when the fires happened back in January, for example, it was kind of that emergency response, the restorations and that whole effort, and we got everything back and going again. This time, it was like, okay, this has happened again, kind of in the same footprint, the same general area. And so we need to do something different. And that's why the mayor has said, and so myself and, um, the, the interim director for the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development are, were designated as co-chair. So we've been collaborating. I can't tell you how many phone calls and meetings the three of us plus, um, Tonya Scott have had in, in talking about this, not just the, the four of us, but with the city administrator, with the utility partners, with everyone. There's been a, a strong focus on this and the big change is us having that meeting on, on, on Friday. You know, where we all got in person and sat there and reviewed it and discussed the challenges and tried to dig into it. So there, there is a change. Uh, we are focused on trying to figure out why this is happening. Believe me, as the asset owner for the conduit, I don't want this to keep happening either. So I want to get to those answers just as much as anyone else does.
And forgive me, colleagues, for asking all these questions. If you have questions, please let me know. Councilman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my question is, um, is there an inspection-like process uh, once utilities are completed, uh, in the conduit?
So yes, we've had inspectors out there, um, continuously. So when they've been out there working and, uh, I'll let maybe Josh speak to a little bit more, but Josh has been there outside. When Josh has to leave, another inspector comes there on site to whatever time in the middle of the night, and then another inspector is coming out there. So we've been, it's almost like 24/7 since this first happened. Conduit Division and our inspectors have been there, um, coordinating with all the city agencies, with all the utility partners, helping to strategize on who needs to get in there and do restoration work based on certain priorities and things like that. And, and then they've been inspecting the work that's been going on to make sure that it's being reinstalled per our standards. So yes.
Okay, cool. And, um, my other question is, uh, is D O T notified like by the, uh, leasees before they go out and do the work in the conduit?
Yes. Um, is that, yeah, yeah. There you go. Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Um, I think this is for the utilities, but it might be for D O T. Uh, we're an old city with old infrastructure and I'm kind of wondering if some of what we're seeing is just that, right? Do we know, I mean, how old is our infrastructure in that area? I mean, downtown, we've done a lot of work downtown, so it shouldn't be as old as, I don't know, Lake Montebello. But, um, what are we, what, I, I'm wondering if that's part of what we're dealing with is that the infrastructure's old and what are the plans for completely redoing all of the infrastructure that's going on downtown if we haven't done it sooner?
So I can't say across the board that infrastructure did not have any type of factor. So I don't want to make anything conclusive, but what I can say is that from the fire in January, some of the conduit and areas that were impacted this time were replaced. Work, work was, work was, um, some of those areas were taken out and replaced and, and upgraded to be new. So some of what was, um, a part of this current fire, um, was new. So it wasn't necessarily an age type of thing. Um, Josh, is there anything else to share with that or you're good? Yeah. So it, so it's not necessarily just that the infrastructure was old and failed, but that.
What about the steam infrastructure?
You said steam? Uh, we're in the area, um, but we're not close to where this happened. The infrastructure in that area, I believe, from the corner of Charles and Saratoga North, um, uh, there has been work done in the past, but we have. there has been work done in the past, but we haven't had issue there in, up in that area.
Do you have steam up in that area?
Yes, in the area. We're, so where the incident happened, we are on, all the way across the street. So this happened in, what, 323 North Charles area? We're on the other side of the street. So we run parallel, but we're on the other side of the street. That we weren't affected at all by anything that happened.
Huh, interesting.
Either time.
Either time?
Either time.
The January or this one?
Most recent.
Wasn't there a steam issue by Camden Yards a few years ago or last year or something? Wasn't that a steam?
That would have been Mother's Day, May.
Something like that, yeah.
Yes.
Uh huh. And that was, that was a steam explosion, yes?
That was a steam, yes, that was a steam incident.
Uh huh. And was that because of, I, we hadn't done an inquiry on this, so if you don't mind. Was that a result of, of just aging infrastructure from the steam? Or, I mean, how often do you maintain as a utility or maintaining your, your infrastructure?
So to answer your first question, so we're still looking at that. That has not been determined.
Oh, really? It's a couple of years old, okay.
Right. The other question, we have a robust maintenance program where we're constantly in all of our manholes twice a year. We can't service the pipe underground, but we're, we're consistently in all our manholes inspecting. And we've replaced them on a routine basis as needed.
So they're replaced as needed? It's not a stand, like an industry standard?
No, no, it's as needed. There are some manholes we haven't done work in for a number of years. They, they just hold up. Other ones, more recent.
Okay, thanks. I have a lot more to learn about that system, so I'm looking forward to trying to figure that out.
You want to thank everybody here.
Yeah, I mean, it's not our district, so we're just totally clueless. So I think, but it is something to, to, to learn and obviously something to think about. So then for BGE, I mean, you're, you've got infrastructure in that area. I know that, you know, there's, there's lots of planned work. I didn't look at the list today, but you do have, you know, you've been doing some work there just as, you know, preventive maintenance. And I know that you do that because there's a lot of digging to go on all over the city. So was your infrastructure impacted by the fire? And how does that, how do you anticipate that working?
Yeah, so just for this last fire, we had over 5,000 feet of primary cable that was damaged. That's cable that's 13,000 volts. We had between 6,000 and 7,000 feet of our secondary cable damage. It impacted nine feeders of our cables, electric cables. So we had a, a large infrastructure damage. As part of the conduit agreement from the first event, we did replace 2,180 feet of conduit for that new section. I will say for this fire event, all that conduit was still in good shape. The cable came out and came back in. For this last event, in order to replace all the cable, we had another 2,590 feet of conduit that had to be replaced in order to remove the cable. When we dug up those obstructions and replaced that conduit, we found the conduit to be old, deteriorating. We found that when it was in close proximity to the steam, it was melted, and that's why the cables wouldn't come out. The repairs that we put back was a new finalic duct that withstands that higher temperature from the steam. So we believe that, you know, by installing this new conduit and upgrading the infrastructure, it'll keep the cables from being damaged in that old terracotta. As you know, when terracotta breaks, it's sharp. If it breaks in the ground from somebody excavating around it, or just from old and deteriorating, it'll cut those cables and could cause them to fail.
So I just heard our friend from vicinity say that they didn't have infrastructure right there where the fire occurred. You just said that there was steam going through there that has impacted the conduit.
Correct. At Charles and Saratoga, the conduit was melted on the top. Steam department had to come out and order to chip away from the concrete for the conduit contractors to put that conduit back. The, the repairs were delayed because we had to wait for special high-temperature conduit to come back and stop.
Okay, I'm just trying to, yeah, go ahead.
This is before or after the fire?
After the fire. So after the fire, the manhole was wrecked out. So in order to replace that, we had to pull cable in every direction in order to repair our cables because they burnt back to the face of the wall. In doing so, when you try to pull cable out of those old aging conduits, the, the ones that weren't replaced previously under the conduit agreement, the cables did not come out. So as a result, we had to replace some of those conduits as well. So from the manhole fire across the street, we built a new conduit bank going east. We built a new conduit bank. And then we replaced, like, the intersection of Charles and Saratoga. We replaced that conduit bank down there as well with new, new-style conduit.
So I guess, I'm just trying to understand where the steam was. I'm just curious.
So the steam was, so the steam for this event, that didn't, I wouldn't say it impacted this event, but it did impact the conduit, right? So you said, does the steam impact the conduit? It did. I'm not saying it led to this event.
We don't know that it was the cause, I understand.
Right.
But, uh huh, so.
So at Charles and Saratoga, on the northeast corner, is where the conduit was melted, where the steam line crosses over the conduit system because of close proximity.
Oh, so that is correct, because you, you had just said that your infrastructure is across the street from where the fire was. The fire was on the other side of the street. I got it.
And that's for this event?
Thank you.
The first event, there was steam blowing into the building close near where the other fire was.
Uh huh.
There's also aging conduit in that area as well that had to be replaced.
No, I'm serious. I need a map with all the utilities, and I know one exists, but we don't have access to it. Only you all have access to it.
Can we make a request?
Yeah, I think it's going to depend on what is on the map. Obviously, if there's sensitive security-related infrastructure under there, I would assume that cannot be shared publicly. So I'll have to.
Understood, but it should be shared with us.
Right. I have a conversation with the administration and come back to you all.
Yeah, so to clarify my request, we would, or I, we would like a map of the area where we've had the fires, that Charles and Saratoga area, and a little bit of north, a little bit of south, east, west, and all that. And then, and what utilities are there and, and where they are. So I know that there's a map that has the water, the sewer, the stormwater. I know that for a fact because I've seen it in my district. But we, I also want to know where the conduit is, steam, and BGE. Electrical, sorry, and gas, because BGE has the conduit also.
And to that effect, was gas affected by this?
No, there was no gas outages or gas impact.
There was no gas impact? Okay. Well, there, there, there were things described as explosions, that being the, the flower shop and the manhole cover. But that doesn't necessarily mean that gas was involved, nor that it was anything more than just the heat from the fire.
Correct. I'm sure it exists.
So it doesn't exist, but I.
Maybe not all on the same map, but there would be, you know, you've got the DPW on with water, sewer, and stormwater. There's, if there isn't a map, that's craziness. There's gotta be then a map relative to where all of our utilities are. It may not be the same map, it might have to be two maps, or three or four maps. I just need maps so that we can, like, take a look at it. There's gotta be an, maybe it's all on OpenGov.
And I would, I would back my colleague up here specifically put, because going back to what I was saying earlier, if we have zero understanding about what's going on here, that is totally unacceptable.
But councilman, I, I just, I kind of disagree with, I think that what you heard from the director, from the mayor, from the city administrator, is that the charge, and, and we had this conversation prior to the hearing, is the charge is to get to the root cause of what is happening. I think we were clear when we came here that we wouldn't have a lot of answers immediately because the investigation, one, with the fire is ongoing, and two, with the issues that are plaguing the conduit system as well, right? That's the reason why this task force was convened of all the utility partners to get them all in one room, talking about the issues, talking about any potential for upgrades and things like that, right? That work is ongoing. As it pertains to the map, councilwoman, like I said, I'll take it back to the team. There may be a need to create such a map, right? So then we'll need to have a conversation around timeline and expectation.
Before you jump in, I, I want to, I want to be clear. While that is the case, this is not the first time this happened. It's not even the second time it's happened. What do you know, it's the third time it's happened. So I think, while I appreciate we've had, and forgive me for, have we had any other meetings on discovering what the cause was for any of the previous fires?
Yeah, I'm sure there have been meetings, but this.
No, 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 I mean, like, it, let me be more pointed with my question here. Of course, we've had meetings about it. I mean, the moment the fire happened, there was a meeting right outside, I'm sure. But I mean, have we had any coordinated efforts to figure out what the cause was in order to identify what we need to change in our activities, and our partners need to change in their own activities, so that we can instruct folks what needs to be different besides the one we just had?
Not sure. I'll get back to you on that.
So I, I think the part of the reason why I think we're asking for this map is because we are trying to push that process forward with urgency because I think we all appreciate the questions that the public has about what happened. And they are very reasonable and legitimate questions for which we are all responsible for. So I, I, I don't know if the map exists, but it's important that we create it and at the very least begin to form a hypothesis about what has happened. Because when it does happen again, we need to be a little bit smarter next time. And, and I don't want to have this hearing and have had that internal meeting, you know, fall flat. We, we, we all want to see progress, and we're all public servants or semi-public servants here. And I think we all want to make sure we do a great job here. That's what, that's why we're asking.
I would imagine that the map exists too, because whenever any digging has to occur, you have to call miss utility.
I'm not disputing that. What I'm saying is, we need, I'll, I'll get back to you all on, on where the map is. I don't have the map to send to you right now. I need to talk with DOT, talk with the fire department, talk with other utilities, because you, you made it clear that you want all of the utilities on one map.
It doesn't have to be all one map if it doesn't exist. But I, what I, what I'm hoping to be able to see is just where everything is, because I want to get a better understanding of, of what's happening. I mean, we, we did that kind of analysis in certain, some parts of my district for a specific thing. So I want to just, you know, work with the, the two council members that represent that area, plus our committee on, you know, just to get a better understanding. There's a lot going on under our city. I would like to know more about it.
Got it.
And as far as turnaround to the committee, would, it is now Wednesday.
I cannot, I don't know. I can't give you a timeline. I can give you update on conversations I've had about the map in the week, yes.
I, I, I will, I will say this, you can give me individual maps for each of those components. I assure you they exist. I, whether or not they're all on the same map, I don't care. I do think we want to have a basic understanding of how these things overlay and could have interacted with each other. That does, it does not necessarily tell us what happened here, but it helps us get closer to the facts of the case. So I.
And I argue, councilman, that that's the job of the work group, though, not the.
It's my job too.
Okay, I'll make sure you, I will follow up on the maps.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I, I get that there's security, so there, there's a way to do this without compromising security. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, I, I know you've been very patient.
That's cool. Can't we all just get along? No, it's fine. No, just, my question is, like, DOT, like, what are the current standards into, like, how do we allow the partners to come and, like, work with, within the conduit? Like, what are the standards? Just for transparency reasons, what are we, what are the current standards today, right now?
So let me confirm, I understand your question. So you're asking essentially what is like the standard operating procedure, per se, for any utility provider or someone who needs to gain access to the conduit system?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to let Josh Taylor, Field Service Supervisor, speak on that.
Any, anytime, anytime currently that anyone that needs to pull cable, whether it's BGE or fiber or anything like that, they have to contact us first. We set an inspector out while they're pulling cable. So that's every, yeah, sorry, so that's every time that anyone needs to get into the system, they have to contact us to have an inspector go out.
I just want to, you know, we just want to make sure that everyone, whether, you know, DOT and, you know, our partners, whatever, just want to make sure that everyone is safe, you know, in and around these, you know, these manholes. Just provide, you know, safeties for, for everyone. So that's the reason why I'm asking these questions, just to make sure that we're providing safety opportunities for those that are in and outside of these manholes. And what do you think is needed to make sure that we're providing those safety measures? It could be answered by DOT or any one of the partners?
Can you repeat that question? I'm not sure I fully understood that one.
Okay, so what are we doing to make sure everyone is safe in and around the manholes? What is needed to ensure that this continues to happen?
So.
Like, safety measures, I mean, if, if, if there's.
Yeah, so, so I mean, obviously, one, as far as the surface level, of course, anytime the utility partners or anyone else is, is going to access the system, then there is designated maintenance traffic in that area. There are certain training required for anyone who's accessing the, the conduit. Confined space training, there you go. I had to get the terminology. So there's certain individuals that have gone through certain training certifications or whatnot to be able to even access that. I couldn't speak to that, maybe, you know, I let conduit and then the utility partners speak on, you know, what their staff, those that access it, what, what they require. But they're, they're, that's all in place. So I think from a worker standpoint and from a public standpoint, when they're doing work, those procedures are in place. You know, it's just unfortunate we're talking about this fire that occurred, but it, it wasn't necessarily a situation of a worker or someone not being safe that led to this, per se. So do you, do you want anyone else to?
Yeah, if someone else.
Okay, so we'll start, start here with Josh for conduits and then any of the utility providers.
So all, all of our inspectors are confined space trained, so they're checking for entry equipment and air quality and air blowers and stuff like that. Now, our standards are a little bit different than BGE's because we don't actually work on the electrical cables. We're not, we're not cutting and splicing and doing that, so their, their standards are a little bit higher than what ours are, what we look for for fiber companies. But like I said, our inspectors are all trained in that to, to watch, to, to double-check, including MOT standards for blocking off lanes or, you know, footways and stuff like that.
And to you, utility partners, like, what, what do you provide?
Similar, similar confined space training, retrieval. All our guys are annually trained. Again, similar to DOT, we don't have the, the dangers that BGE has in their manholes. But it's sometimes high temperature, but get fans for venting the manholes.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
So for BGE, if it's a city-owned manhole or a BGE manhole, our procedures are the same for manhole entry. Our employees that work in manholes are trained to be for manhole entry, as well as manhole rescue. They have CPR and first aid. All our trucks carry AEDs. Then they're, they're trained in the proper PPE, the wear while they're working in the manhole, and they're trained on hazard recognition when they're in the manhole. Our crews are required to do a thermal scan when they get in the manhole to verify that none of the utilities in the hole could cause a, an issue. So for us, if it's a city-owned manhole or if it's a BGE manhole, our standards are the same for entry.
All right. Thank you all for providing that information. Thank you. Thank you, councilman. I, I think it sounds like there are still quite a few things we need to figure out, of which I don't think we're going to get really any of those answers today. But I do, I do hope it is abundantly clear we need to work towards some answers here in order for us to figure out what needs to change. I think the highest priority for certainly myself and that I would imagine this committee as well, if I could speak for my colleagues, is making sure that we can assure the safety of folks, especially in this area, noting we've had multiple issues. And so that is going to require coordination with all the folks in that area. It's going to require partnership for all the folks in that area. It's going to require some investigative work to figure out what happened these multiple times. And I know there's going to be a desire to point fingers left and right. I know there's going to be a desire to point fingers left and right. That's not our goal here. Our goal is the safety of the citizens of Baltimore. So I want to encourage the folks here, the partners here, the partners who are not here, to think about what they can do to make sure that we are that much better next time around as opposed to continuing to do whatever it is we're doing now that seems to be part of the problem. And I, I know all the folks in this room want to see that happen as well. So with that, I have no more questions, colleagues, if you have no more questions. Please.
I appreciate you inviting us. Thank you for, you know, giving this an opportunity to, to speak.
And please state your name for the record.
Sure, no, I'm Trey Spear. I am the External Affairs Manager for BGE in Baltimore City. I just want to, you know, wrap things up. You know, it was touched on that a lot of the issues are a result of the age and deterioration of the conduit system. One of our big initiatives at BGE is partnering up with the city and providing and building out new ducts and conduit within the city so that we can be a good partner and also offer a safe and usable conduit system for not just BGE as one of, one of the many utility providers in the city, but also for our partners as well. So just wanted to add that.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that, Trey. And I think, you know, especially given the relationship that BGE shares with the department in the management of the conduit and the expansion of the conduit, I think you guys would naturally be very strong partners and probably higher in that sort of priority amongst folks as we think about what solutions need to happen. And so I appreciate that and, you know, look forward to hopefully more progress on this issue. Tyler, certainly looking forward to anything you can gladly share with the committee regarding maps of the area. Appreciate you. With that, this hearing is in recess and, yeah, thank you, guys.